Half a day. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Wednesday, March 30th, 2022. The time is 5:40 PM. In compliance with the open government law, notices for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post on Wednesday, March 23, 2022, and Monday, March 28, 2022, and in the government of Guam Public Notice Portal. Notices were also disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues today and thank them for attending, beginning with the sponsor of the resolution, Senator and minority leader Senator Chris Duñez, our vice speaker Senator Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Anthony Ada, Senator Frank Blas, and Senator Telo Taitigui, and Senator Joanne Brown. Again, thank you, colleagues. We have one agenda item tonight, that is Resolution Number 291-36COR. It's introduced by Christopher M. Duñez, James C. Moylan, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Joanne Brown, Telo Taitigui. It's relative to terminating the emergency health powers created by 10GCH Chapter 19 pursuant to 10GCA 19405C in order to restore the civil rights of the people of Guam. For the record, the public and for the public's information, Resolution Number 291-36COR was referred to the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture on March 21 by the Legislature's Committee on Rules. Upon referral, this committee scheduled the public hearing at the earliest date possible in compliance with required public notices. According to the 36 Guam Legislature Standing Rules, substantive resolutions can be referred to the prime sponsor of the resolution or standing committee at the discretion of the Committee on Rules. Resolutions requiring public consideration shall be processed in the same manner as As a result, the committee, after the public hearing, will prepare a committee report and submit to the Committee on Rules for approval before the resolution can be placed on the agenda for consideration by the body. Also, for the record, many invitations to this public hearing were sent by my office in addition to the public notices. And those who we've sent notice to who are not present today, as far as we know, are Guam Homeland Security, Guam Homeland Security Advisor and Governor's Special Assistant for Homeland Security, Office of Civil Defense Administrator and appointed member of FEMA National Advisory Council, the Attorney General of Guam, the Guam Police Department, the Guam Fire Department, Guam Medical Association and Guam Medical Society, the Guam Chamber of Commerce, Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce. All written testimonies received by the committee as of 5:00 PM are in the drive and are provided for public review. I'd also like to acknowledge the presence of Senator Moylan. As of 5:00 PM, we have 27 people signed up to testify. Seventeen of these are from a list sent down by the governor's office. We are trying to accommodate all of you as efficiently as possible. Thus, I am respectfully asking senators to hold off on questions until after everyone has testified. However, I would ask specifically that the following remain for questions from senators, and those are the representatives from the Guam Memorial Hospital, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and the Governor's Physicians Advisory Group, including the chairperson. And out of courtesy for all those who signed up to testify, and in order to allow the opportunity for senators to ask questions, to inform their decision on this resolution, I am respectfully asking that you limit your testimony, all of you, from three to three to five minutes at the most. We have a lobby full of people here to testify, and I thank all of you for the time that you've taken to come here in person to testify. All right, so we've brought in the first panel, and I'm going to ask that each of you please state your name for the record before you begin. So we're going to transcribe all of these proceedings, so yeah, to state that very clearly. All right. Anyone who is here to testify, please sign in at the table inside this public hearing room. Please sign in. All right. After this panel, we will hear from a panel from the Department of Public Health and Social Services, a panel from the Guam Memorial Hospital Association, and the Physicians Advisory Group, a panel of other health professionals. Thank you. All right. I will begin, I will ask the prime sponsor of the resolution to please introduce and read the resolution into the record, Senator Duñez.
Sujos Masi, Madam Speaker, and it's so nice to be here in the People's House, in the legislature, to hear the people's voices. Half a day and thank you, Speaker Terri Strelahi, Chairperson for the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, for scheduling this public hearing today. Thank you to our co-sponsors Senator Moylan, Ada, Blas, Brown, and Taitigui for their support, and thank you to all of you that took the time to be here today and let your voice be heard. It is ironic, because what we are doing here today is exactly what Bill 11 was looking to do, bringing our people to the table and give their input on whether a public health emergency declaration is still needed. It is also an opportunity for the administration to justify their reasons to keep the emergency and show us all the things that they have been doing to help our people. But we're here for Resolution 291-36, which, by the way, was addressed by our governor through an eight-page executive order issued last night, justifying the public health emergency and even taking the time to criticize the legislature. It was a very unusual executive order. It would have been more appropriate to just come down here and have some meaningful dialogue with the legislature and our people. Hopefully, the governor can take the time to come down tonight. But let me take the rest of my time on the opening statement to read the resolution into the record. Relative to terminating the emergency health powers created by 10GCH Chapter 19 pursuant to 10GCA 19405 in order to restore the civil rights of the people of Guam. Be it resolved by the Committee on Rules of Imena Trenta Saes na Legisitur in Guam, whereas the governor invoked the emergency powers provided by 10GCH Chapter 19 by promulgation of Executive Order 202003 on March 14, 2020, and whereas the governor then proceeded to promulgate 33 more executive orders, plus a plethora of DPHSS guidance memos, the effect of which were to arbitrarily and capriciously lock down the island, destroy commerce, restrict the liberty of citizens, isolate and quarantine people, and generally abuse whatever authority is available under 10GCH Chapter 19. And whereas pursuant to 10GCA 19405D, the legislature finds the following. The nature of the emergency was the infection of some residents with COVID-19. The area threatened was the island of Guam. The conditions that make the possible termination of the declaration are many measures established nationally to prevent the spread of COVID-19 virus. Without the necessity of imposing draconian conditions on the population, have been incorporated by the businesses, government entities, along with households, hence removing the necessity of imposing draconian conditions on the population. The measures that are being imposed by businesses and government entities, along with households, is aimed at reducing the number of hospitalization cases related to COVID-19 at local hospitals, and statistically, this has been proved to be effective. And whereas the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Act, Stafford Act, is a 1988 United States federal law designated to bring an orderly and systemic means of federal natural disaster assistance for state and local governments in carrying out their responsibilities to aid citizens. Whereas in March 13, 2020, President Donald J. Trump declared an emergency under Section 501B of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Assistance Act, Stafford Act 42USC 5121ET Squire. It is in response to COVID-19 and the declaration authorized assistance to all U.S. states, territories, tribes, and the District of Columbia. Whereas federal relief packages provided by the United States Congress, specifically the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan, provided blanket financial support for states and territories, with the understanding that the COVID-19 virus impacted all jurisdictions, regardless of whether respective state or territory had a personal declaration in place, or regardless of the level of surges the state and territory was facing. Whereas by lifting the emergency declaration pursuant to Chapter 19 of Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, does not remove the authority of any business or government entity from establishing protocols, as they would deem necessary to protect their employees, customers, or stakeholders. Whereas the emergency declaration pursuant to Chapter 19 of Title 10 Guam Code Annotated provides the governor of Guam unprecedented authority over government procurement and hiring, which creates challenges towards checks and balances, which is a crucial component of democracy, and one which has been evaded by the administration. And whereas allowing the governor unprecedented authority over procurement and hiring during election season, particularly with millions of dollars of federal relief funds deposited into the government of Guam's bank accounts, establishes a dangerous precedence in terms of how those funds will be spent and prioritized. Whereas nothing in this act prevents the governor from signing another emergency declaration pursuant to Chapter 19 of Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, and pursuant to COVID-19 if the need arises in the future. Granted, the reason is justified. And whereas 10GCA 19405C, which reads, "The Guam Legislature, by a majority vote, the Guam Legislature may terminate the declaration of the state of public health emergency at any time from the date of original declaration upon finding that the occurrence of an illness or health condition that caused the emergency does not or no longer poses a high probability of the large number of deaths in the affected population, a large number of incidents of serious permanent or long-term disability in the affected population, or significant risk of substantial future harm to a large number of people in the affected population." Such a termination by the Guam Legislature shall override any renewal by Magalhain Guam, the governor. The 36 Guam Legislature hereby finds that termination of the public health emergency declared by Executive Order 2020-3, as extended by subsequent executive orders, is warranted. Now therefore, and the resolved clause by a vote of eight or more members by this legislature would resolve and have this public health emergency effectively terminated. Resolved, and then the speaker and the chairperson of the Committee on Rules certify, and the legislative secretary attest to the adoption hereof, and that copies of the same be transmitted to the honorable Lourdes A. Leon Guerrero I Magah in Guam. Madam Speaker, I look forward to the testimony tonight from both our government officials and our private citizens at the People's House to hear their voices and to see whether this resolution continues or has merit to move forward. And with that, Madam Speaker, I thank you for holding this public hearing. Sujos Masi.
Sujos Masi, Senator Duñez. We'll now begin with the first panel. Begin on the left, please. Debbie Staley.
Our purpose here today is to discuss Resolution Number 291-36. Thank you, Senator Duñez, for introducing this resolution, and Senators Ada, Blas, Brown, Moylan, and Taitigui for supporting it. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for scheduling this public hearing. I'm providing testimony in support of this resolution, but I want to preface what I'm about to say with the fact that ending a public health emergency does not in any way prevent people from taking necessary precautions appropriate to their current situation and comfort level. For over 23 years, I have lived on Guam. It is my home. I'm a homeowner invested in the community. The division and discrimination that has been promoted over the past seven to eight months in the name of a public health emergency is a far cry from the tremor culture I know and love. Many restrictions are now being lifted, so some may question the necessity of this resolution. It is almost too little, too late. I wish this resolution had been introduced back in August, and to be fair, this resolution is not enough. The passage of Bill 1136 should be the ultimate goal. The Organic Act gives the governor of Guam broad powers in a public emergency, but that power was not meant to be given indefinitely. For one person to have so much power for over two years without input from the legislature, the people's voice, is a slap in the face to your ancestors and other liberators who freed Guam from occupation. As a teacher, I can attest to the impact some of the restrictions have had on education and to the impact those restrictions continue to have. The delays in reading and writing in particular are significant, and even more significant the lower down in elementary you go, as a result of being online for such an extended time. Seeing a teacher make sounds is critical for helping students learn to read in K5 and first grade. Even though students are now back in school, the mandatory mask-wearing is causing continued delays in the lower elementary classrooms. That delay is going to have a trickle-down effect in years to come. Our island cannot continue to live in an indefinite state of emergency, especially when that state of emergency has been used over the past two-plus years to oppress and punish innocent citizens and has taken away their God-given right to make medical decisions for themselves. I realize this state of emergency has allowed us to receive a great deal of money from the federal government, but how much of this money has actually been used to benefit the working people of Guam? Is there an itemized breakdown for how the money has been spent? I watched in December as Governor Leon Guerrero at the National Governors Association Summit bragged to the other governors that she had discretionary power over the use of the ARP money and that the legislature was not happy about it. Would she still have that power if we were not in a health emergency, or would it have to go through the normal appropriations and procurement process? I don't know. I know there are federal restrictions on what the money can be used for, but where's the transparency on the use of those funds? The governor said we needed to remain in a state of emergency so that we could continue to use the Guam National Guard and have the federal government pay for their use. Why do we still need the services of the National Guard? The quarantine facility is closed. We have one remaining isolation facility, I think, that is being used as needed. 95, 96% of the eligible population is vaccinated. The rest who are not are either ineligible or have medical and religious reasons for not taking the vaccine. In my opinion, there's no longer a need for the National Guard, so why are we still in a state of emergency? The governor made her case for continuing the emergency in her executive order issued yesterday. After reading through it, my question remains, why are we still in a state of emergency? Cases are down, hospitalizations are down, there are good therapeutics available, although many are being denied use of some of them. This whole health emergency may have been about health of our island in the beginning, but it is no longer the purpose. No one was questioning the need for a health emergency in the beginning. There was much we didn't know. The governor needed to be able to make decisions quickly without a lot of bureaucratic red tape, but over two years into it, we can no longer say it is a health emergency. For some time now, it has been about using fear to create power and control. It is time for the health emergency to end. It is time for checks and balances to be restored. It is time for transparency in how the funds from the federal government are being spent. It is time for schools to be allowed to do their jobs without hindering restrictions. It is for this reason that I am strongly in favor of this resolution and beg you to vote in support of Resolution 291-36 to end the public health emergency. Sujos Masi.
Sujos Masi, Ms. Staley, next.
Angela Beckwith. And I too would like to thank the senators, especially, I, can you hear me? I too would like to thank the senators, especially Senator Duñez. We have spent a significant amount of time in his office. Sometimes, you know, just, thank you, sir. And Madam Speaker, thank you for doing this for us. Thank you for listening. Thank you for putting this on as quickly as you did. So I am, my peers here are just, they're going to talk about all of the stuff that's going on with the emergency itself. I am going to read into record a letter, an email actually, that was sent to us. We have been trying, a couple days before the Fourth of January of this year, we met with Ms. Carrera over at DPHSS, asked her if we could please set up a public town hall so we could get information that we have several people asking questions about, and since then, we've just been asking. And so we eventually got this via electronic email. The response to email dated March 22nd, and it says, "This is in response to your email dated March 22nd, in which you request for..." So we had asked for a Freedom of Information Act for your request for all of this information, and these are the things we've been asking for. "Since the start of the pandemic, what have the numbers and percentages been for the following on Guam, year 2020, 2021, and 2022, two now, for children 5 to 11 and 12 to 17? Case numbers, recovery, hospitalization, mortality, pre and post-vaccine information?" We asked for vital stats for deaths, records of deaths on Guam with stated causes for the years 2019, 20, and 21. We asked, "We would like to know how many of the people testing positive are fully vaxxed, and fully vaxxed and boosted, numbers and percentages, please? Why is several positive testing not being done more regularly? The CDC has a database, however, Guam is reporting only 489 tests done to date. This is helpful in estimating overall immunity of the population." "Why is the National Guard still running the testing and vaccination clinics? Why is this not staffed by the nurses and doctors from public health? We would also like to be a part of the weekly COVID brief that is done with the ability to ask questions. Another option would be a Q&amp;A town hall. Why has the governor or her office or DPHSS not made the effort to reach out to the public directly, despite several attempts to reach out on our part? The active effort that goes, that to get doctors to push the vaccines is indirectly proportional to the effort by GovGuam to have those docs actively report adverse events. How can this be mitigated by truth, to be truthful and transparent in the efforts to present a non-biased view of the efficacy and the harms of the vaccine? Regarding masking, several studies have come out showing the negligible effect masking has had in the prevention of community spread. The governor herself has been seen at various events maskless, while others are still required to wear a mask. Why do we still continue the mask mandate? We are the third year into the pandemic, and what has been done over at GMH to expand and shore up the capabilities at that site to better serve the community? Has there been another site fitted out to respond to a surge, or are we just waiting on a new hospital? The 7+26 million allocated to GMH, what has become of that?" And this is what Ms. Carrera wrote. "Pursuant to 5GCA 10103E, L, and 2, it is necessary to extend the time to respond to your request for documents by up to 10 days. A response will be provided to you no later than April 7, 2022. If you have any questions, please let me know." So this, we have been seeking information for the longest time. We have been asking to come to the table to be able to have a dialogue, and so, you know, it's always, maybe I, you know something I don't know. And there has never been any effort on the part of DPHSS, on the part of, I can't speak for the governor's office personally, because I only made one call, but we have not had that transparency. We have not had the ability to ask our questions. We have had these closed meetings, these closed Zoom calls, where people get to present, and then you have follow-up questions by the press, and not the appropriate or the relevant follow-up questions, and we've been seeking over the last several months to be a part of that so that we can get the questions that we need answered, and we have not. And I asked, when I testified on September 3, 2021, I read the words, "Today I ask, what has been done in the last 18-plus months to create or expand the capacity of GMH?" And I will close my statement today, asking, "What has been done at GMH?" Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beckwith. Next, Mr. Flores. Please state your name for the record.
Madam Speaker, my name is Christopher Camacho Flores, but at this time, I would like to yield my time to the other presenters, and I would like to speak last, if I could.
All right. Hi, I'm Elizabeth Forbes, and I am a wife, mother of three, and a COVID survivor. Our family loves this island, and it pains us to see what COVID has done to this beautiful place. I'm here today to ask that you, the 36 Guam Legislature, please pass Resolution 291-36. Dictatorship is defined on Britannia.com as "a form of government in which one person or a small group possesses absolute power without effective constitutional limitations." A dictator is defined as "a designated temporary magistrate who was granted extraordinary powers in order to deal with state crises. Dictators usually resort to force or fraud to gain tyrannical political power, which they maintain through the use of intimidation, terror, fear, and suppression of basic civil liberties. Dictators govern through fear and executive order." Governor Leon Guerrero told us herself that she would be a benevolent dictator during the Guam Medical Association Forum, March 2020. A democracy is ruled by the people, or in our case, our elected representatives, who have had little to no say in what our governor has been doing during the last two-plus years of this pandemic. Our governor has used Public Health Emergency 2020-03 and its 30-day extensions to intimidate, segregate, and destroy this island. Our governor has preyed on the fear of this virus long enough. She states publicly that this is a pandemic of the unvaccinated. This is causing fear and strain within families in the community. She continues to encourage mask-wearing, even in public, when the science shows that cloth and surgical masks, non-95, don't work. Why would you ever need to wear a mask while alone outdoors? Why doesn't she have to make her case to us? The governor states that she's following the science, but what science? Please hold her accountable to explain why and how she's making these decisions. I understand that the healthcare system is of real concern when making these decisions, but let me ask you this. If it's so critical not to overrun the hospitals, why hasn't there been anything done, improvements made, or add-ons built in the last two-plus years? It's critical but not necessary. Or I'm sorry, it's critical but not a necessity. At this point, things are not adding up. Please vote to end the public health emergency and let this island get its much-deserved democracy, freedom, and future back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Forbes.
Testing. Half a day, my name is Marie Rojas. I have been a Guam Department of Education secondary-level educator for 15 years. Sorry, my glasses are falling off. I'm here today to testify in support of Resolution 291-36-36. I'd like to preface my comments with a quote from Thomas Jefferson, who wrote, "When injustice becomes law, resistance becomes duty." I am here today out of that sense of duty, and to openly express how I have been victimized by a mandate that deprived me of my right to make my own decisions about what can be injected into my body. I was required to get vaccinated or be tested weekly in order to keep my job. Because a vaccine was not approved and side effects were unknown, I opted for the lesser of two evils and submitted to weekly testing for the virus. From the very first test and throughout the entire time I was getting tested weekly, I suffered from severe headaches and sinus pain. The pains were so bad that I consequently missed a lot of workdays. That requirement was recently lifted, but my suffering has not been lifted. I continue to experience headaches and sinus pain. In support of Resolution 291-36, I submit the following reasons. First, just like laws, executive orders are subject to legal review, and the Supreme Court or lower federal courts can nullify or cancel an executive order if they determine it is unconstitutional. The Organic Act provides that the governor shall have the power to issue executive orders and and regulations not in conflict with any other applicable law. The Organic Act sets forth that no discrimination shall be made in Guam against any person on account of race, language, or religion, nor shall the equal protection of the laws be denied. While the need for a mandate can be justified for a reasonable timeframe, the continuous extensions that prolonged it for two years are uncalled for and highly questionable. Second, as indicated in yesterday's daily Guam Daily Post, the Department of Public Health and Social Services reported 42 new COVID-19 cases from Saturday to Monday. There are 888 cases in active isolation, including 13 at the three hospitals. There's currently one pediatric admission, but no one was in intensive care or on a ventilator. More than 90% of the population is vaccinated. The virus that causes COVID-19 and its variants are no longer sudden nor unforeseen. It is no longer a pandemic, but endemic. We have lived with this virus for over two years. We are well-informed and equipped to protect ourselves without a mandate. Third, during the pandemic, authorities did not provide for complete transparency. Pertinent information was not being reported by public health officials. Information such as the number of vaccinated individuals who tested positive for COVID-19, vaccine adverse reactions, vaccine-related deaths, and potential adverse health effects of mask wearing. The Guam Freedom Coalition has been seeking answers for months now and have yet to receive any. Fourth, statements made by public health officials such as the unvaccinated can spread the virus more than the vaccinated, natural immunity is not good against new variants, or this is a pandemic of the unvaccinated. The unvaccinated are the holes in the shield and the unvaccinated are like cracks in the wall, have caused division and segregation in our community. The sad reality is that there is not one shred of evidence in the form of scientific data that supports these statements. Fifth and final reason. Mandates in response to this pandemic are in violation of the Nuremberg Code. The code was written and adopted on August 1947 in Nuremberg, Germany, by American judges sitting in judgment of Nazi doctors accused of conducting murderous and torturous human experiments in the concentration camps. On October 22, 2020, there was an FDA document from Vaccines and Related Biological Products Advisory Committee. The document indicated that the committee expected a number, expected a number of very serious side effects from these vaccines, to include death. But none of these were listed on the side effects sheets. Therefore, no one has been given informed consent when taking these vaccines. The Guam medical community also will not provide a medical exemption for any patient. Each patient has a unique medical history and should be provided considerations that are relevant to their uniqueness. To do otherwise is unacceptable and the blanket refusal, refusal to provide exemptions is inconscionable. In closing, please allow me to reiterate that we are one nation under God, a God who loves us so much, he gave us free will and rights. So please, senators, I urge all of you to pass Resolution Number 291-36 relative to terminating the emergency health powers in order to restore the civil rights of the people of Guam. Thank you. Thank you, Speaker Talahi, for this opportunity to testify today.
Thank you, Ms. Rojas. Mr. Belishev?
Buenos. My name is G. Genadi. We were asked two weeks to flatten the curve.
You state your full name for the record.
Genadi Belishev. We were asked for two weeks to flatten the curve and happy anniversary on two years, everybody. I am one of the 99.9% survivors of this virus. And we have been encouraged for the past two years to treat each other like lepers and kind of like what we did in kindergarten, afraid of cooties. Somebody next to me was going to get me infected and I might infect grandma and she will die. This is what we've lived like for two years, folks. We have, we have an island that has been, that has followed all steps, protocols, in the name of safety and recovery. Vaccinated once, vaccinated twice, boosted once, and still afraid, still wearing masks, still afraid of neighbors and so on and so forth, still afraid to breathe air, okay? We've been encouraged to snitch on each other. We've been pointing fingers at each other for, for a few years on blaming somebody for the latest spread, so on and so forth. We have a governor that chose to dictate us out of a two-year flu with mandates and fines. Her statement that has been already repeated a few times, this is a pandemic of the unvaccinated, has hurt a lot of people that genuinely care about their health and have personal, religious, or medical reasons for not taking this experimental mRNA. This administration has legalized modern-day segregation, discrimination, workplace harassment, and shaming. This administration created an outcast group, as you just recently heard the witness. I witnessed Manomkoos being kicked out of restaurants, denied access because they couldn't show their medical records. You know what I'm talking about? That's supposed to be private, but because they wouldn't show them the records, they were denied access. So today, religious, medical, and personal rights and freedoms were completely ignored in the name of health. We've heard Thomas Jefferson's quote, I'll mention another one. "When you abandon freedom to achieve security and safety, you lose both and deserve neither." If this truly was about health, why are we still allowing smoking and the sales of smoking, tobacco? And why did McDonald's remain open? Sorry about that, folks, but if this was about health, Mickey D's never closed. It is my understanding that 90% of the people that have died from the Rona have three to four core morbidities. I'd like to have somebody check in on that. So I'm looking at 90% of all deaths have three to four core morbidities. Is this the pandemic of the unvaccinated? Just a question. COVID has become the new world religion. I call it COVID cult, okay? Webster's dictionary, Webster's dictionary definition of cult is "a system for a cure of a disease based on dogma set forth by its promulgators." If you don't join this religion or follow all of its steps, you will be persecuted, you will be shamed, you will be terminated, you will be harassed, discriminated regardless of your personal, medical, or religious beliefs. This cult gave us many, 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 many steps to success. One of them is right here, check it out! There. And then, the next person next to me? 72 inches! Yeah! We've been treated like little kids. Stay in this bubble, stay in that bubble, you'll be safe. We've been treated like children. Stay here, don't move there, hang this on a wall, hang this on every window so that you can read all the steps that our cult offers. Wear the diaper over the face, wear the face shield, wear the gloves, wear this, wear it, wear it, wear it, wear it. It's going to save you, it's going to save the island, get it, get it, right? And this, put it over yourself. We're covering ourselves up in fear for two years, my friends, for two years. We've been talking about this. And guess what? All this stuff that we, that the cult has told us to do has not worked for two years. Be honest with yourselves. You know somebody next to you has caught the Rona, but this was supposed to stop the Rona. This was going to stop the Rona. This was going to stop it. Nobody was going to catch it. This is all going to keep us safe. Yet we all caught the Rona and we recovered. And we recovered, okay? We've all been vaccinated, boosted once, twice, still catching the Rona, still living in fear. Plexiglas sanitizer, temperature guns, can you imagine? These things were being pointed at people's heads, folks. I was robbed that gunpoint. Next time somebody points a thing at your head with a trigger, that, that could be a, you know, I could have a natural reaction. And yet, this is what we were doing in the name of fear, safety, and so on. I'd like to share a story of my neighbor, David. He was in the ICU for 35 days. He was in the hospital for 40. Upon checkout, I'll back up, he flatlined three times. He had a heart attack three times and officially died. Upon checkout, a doctor privately came to my neighbor and said, "Mr. David, I advise you not to get the booster. The reason why you are here is because you had a massive blood clot that was caused by the vaccine. It dislodged itself and gave you the three separate heart attacks, putting you in this position." We asked the doctor, he will not come forward, afraid to lose his license, okay? Because we're shaming and we're threatening people to not speak the truth, okay? If there's risk, right? We need, we need to at least have a choice. We've been deceived about the death count. I'd like to talk about a few of them because as we wake up in the morning, we read one more case, one more death, one more case, one more death. So a personal friend of mine, Mr. Tom, died of a completely different situation, a, a bleed-out from a, from another organ. And the EMTs were slipping all over the blood to try to save him and resuscitate him. He went, he went to the hospital. Few hours later, the wife was called and was told, "Your husband died of or with COVID." And she's like, "Did you not miss, did you miss the blood that you were slipping on?" He had no respiratory issues. He had no medical issues. He hadn't, he was not taking any prescription pills. He had no allergies and definitely had no issues with respiratory. Completely different part of his body, blood out, and he was a COVID death. And guess what? Two days later, public health has a very interesting way of doing this. In a time where the family is vulnerable and is desperate, public health calls these families and says, "Hi, Mrs., so-and-so, would you please come in and are you willing to sign this document because your husband died of COVID? And we are giving you, your family qualifies for $10,000." This doesn't happen once, this doesn't happen twice, this happened multiple times on our island. We are bribing our people in the time of crisis, when they're vulnerable, with $10,000. Of course, this family is going to say, "Well, wow, this is kind of a blessing because I need finances to bury my husband." So they take it, but they say there was nothing COVID-related with this man. I have another person, who's my local father, Mr. Michael, also. He had a weak heart. He passed away at home peacefully, went to the hospital, obviously taken to the hospital. They tested the dead man, my dad, and said, "Oh," to mom, "he's positive." Two days later, guess who's calling? Public health. "Ma'am, would you please come in and sign a document, signifying and agreeing, and we have $10,000 for your family?" She's like, "But he died of a heart condition that he had. He didn't have any respiratory issues. He was fine up until you tested him." "Oh, you don't want the money? Well, I do, but..." Okay? So, folks, there are many cases. This is no longer conspiracy. A year ago was conspiracy. It is not a conspiracy. It's happening on our island that people are being bribed with cash in the name of, you know, I don't know. It's, it's extremely disturbing for me. So I would like some transparency on, on a few of these cases because clearly the death count is wrong and off. These are not COVID deaths, okay? So I'm also asking for some transparency on vaccine injuries and deaths and miscarriages. We know that there is a spike, but it's not being discussed. We know there, there, there are at least three vaccine-related deaths and, but it's not being talked about, okay?
Sir, I'd just like to remind you of the time. It's exceeded five minutes.
Awesome. So, folks, thank you very much. Many, many questions and please stop the spread of fear. Stop the spread of fear.
Thank you very much. Ms. Santes?
Hello? Okay, sorry. Hafiday, my name is Norma Jean Santes and I am here in support of Resolution 291-36. I ask for your support to pass this resolution and terminate the public health emergency. The governor declared a public health emergency on March 14th, 2020. It has been two years and plus days that we have been in this state. The definition of emergency, a sudden, unforeseen happening that requires action to correct or to protect lives and/or property. The COVID-19 virus and its foreseen variants are no longer sudden nor unforeseen. We have lived with this virus for two years and plus days. We are well-informed to protect ourselves. Pertinent information is not being reported by the public health officials such as the number of vaccinated individuals, as shared by Ms. Angela, who test positive for COVID-19, vaccine adverse reactions, vaccine-related deaths, and potential adverse health effects of mask wearing. This public health emergency, which has allowed the governor to continue to implement her executive orders, her mandates, coercion, has narratives by the governor, public health officials, and media has caused division and segregation in our community. And I truly know segregation. I am a GDOE teacher and as of October 25th, 2021, I was restricted from my job because of these mandates. I have only returned to work March 14, 2022. And why? Because based on my religious beliefs as well as my ethnic practices and beliefs, I choose not to be vaccinated because I believe in my natural immunity that God has bestowed upon me, as well as my practice of our culture here in Guam, which is Chamoral medicine. I continuously asked to return to work as I had done so prior to October 25th, 2021, but I was continuously restricted because I was told I was unvaccinated and I refused to follow the executive order to be tested weekly. I would also just like to add, just with the Executive Order 202209, and this is the governor's words herself, where she said, "Whereas our island's response to the spread of COVID-19 is fortified by our robust vaccination rate, over 135,000 Guam residents are fully vaccinated." Why are we still then in a public health emergency? This means that approximately 95% of our five-plus eligible population or 80 and 80%, 88% of our entire population is fully vaccinated. Once again, why are we still in a public health emergency if we are doing well? And then it said, "Over 50% of our fully vaccinated population has also received their booster, a rate that is among the highest in the country." So these are her words. So once again, why are we continuing the public health emergency? Why are we putting our people on this island through all of this hardship? I would also like to show that based on the COVID-19 virus, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry. COVID-19 virus in children is commonly mild and serious conditions, of which is the consequences of the virus remain rare. Prolonged symptoms are uncommon. The U.S. Centers for Disease Control estimate, put the infection fatality rate from COVID-19 among children zero to 17 years old at 20% and that out of per one million. So that is a 0.002% possibility with hospitalizations very low. Also, children with very low risk for severe disease would be exposed to COVID-19 vaccine risk, known and unknown. Currently, the vaccine that was forced upon us all was still an emergency use authorization only. It was not approved, so it was still in its test stage. Why would our governor, the maga haga of this island, put her people through that? Everyone, it was unknown- Everyone, it was unknown and unknown still being tested. Furthermore, the long-term effects of gene-based vaccines, which involve novel vaccine platforms, remain essentially unknown. The World Health Organization states that if children with developmental issues, cognitive impairments, severe breathing problems, certain disabilities, or medical conditions that make it hard for them to tolerate masks for long periods or breathe properly, wearing a mask for such children shouldn't be mandatory. Children cannot be mandated to be COVID-19 vaccinated and masked up in school. The U.S. Constitution must be followed. Lastly, once again, taking from her executive order that was just issued yesterday. Whereas in addition to the COVID-19 national emergency, public health emergencies continue in 20 states as of March 2022. We are, the U.S. has 50 states. So that means this identifies that 30 states have terminated their public health emergency. What do they know? And what have they done that Guam is not doing that? Why are we still in this public health emergency? And to end, and once again, I'd like to ask for all your support to please pass Resolution 291-36 and terminate the public health emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santes. Mr. Flores?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My name is Christopher Camacho Flores. And let me just set my timer here, if I may. Okay. Uh, my name is Christopher Camacho Flores. And, uh, I didn't come with a prepared statement. I speak from the heart. And I've heard the other speakers before me, and I share all your concerns. And I was with you all through that time. And yes, sometimes I question the governor's motives or her decisions, her executive orders. But I'm a retired military officer. And Senator Anna, you are a veteran. I look up here on the panel. I don't know who else has served in the military. But we are a nation of laws. We follow orders as well. And I don't see, to this date, and it looks like from all the other speakers before, we're beating a dead horse, really. We're beating a dead horse. We, we need to move forward. I've heard nothing but previous incidents, incidences, and we, we all went through that. I went through the roadblocks. I didn't agree with it. But if it was to inform the people of Guam to stay home because this stuff is serious, then we should. And again, we are a nation of laws. The, I have never seen or have yet to see the AG come out and say, "Governor, that is an illegal executive order." All the executive orders that this governor has initiated are legally binding. You want to beat a, uh, beat a dead horse? Let's go back to the beginning then. Where was this body 120 days into the pandemic? Where were you guys? You guys were all silent. Nothing was happening. Nothing was happening out of the legislature. Okay? Until the stuff hits the fan down there with the procuring and all that, then you guys all started showing up and raising hell with the governor. It's a, it's a good thing that this is, this governor is, is our governor at this time. Because imagine if it was Ray Tenorio. I'm a diehard Republican. I'm a loyal Republican. I, I look up here on the panel and I see, uh, six Republican senators and two Democrat senators. I don't know where the other Democrat senators are, but we'll get back to that later. But I'm a loyal Republican supporter, voter, soldier. But I didn't support Ray Tenorio for my own personal reasons. But you want to play Monday morning quarterback and question the governor's executive orders to this date? You know, we could do that all day. But keep in mind, there was a wise Republican leader who recently declared his candidacy for governor and was questioned by the media. What would you have done differently that Governor Leon Guerrero did? And he is so smart and so wise that former Governor Felix Camacho said, "I will not second-guess the governor because I am not in her shoes." And I, I, I share this with you senators because you should, you should do the same, especially you Republican senators. Take heed to your party leaders. Why are we be, beating a dead horse to death? The governor has done nothing wrong with her executive orders. We may not agree with it. I was in the military. There was a lot of orders I didn't agree with. But by God, I had to follow them. Because it may have saved my life. Probably did. It may have kept me alive to be here to talk to you. I know the governor was very concerned early on. She took this pandemic seriously. And if you, uh, I've heard stuff here about discrimination and, uh, concentration camps. Really? Are we there in Guam? I don't think so. So let's not exacerbate the, uh, the situation. I don't support this Resolution 291-36. Again, it's a, it's a grandstanding, uh, trying to challenge the governor's authority. I heard, uh, Senator Frank Blas on the link this morning, I believe it was this morning, that there are several reasons why a resolution is put together by this body. One of them is to recognize an individual for an outstanding performance or a nonprofit organization or an organization. Another reason is to tell Congress how the people of Guam feel, which sometimes I don't even agree with what you guys put together. Because I wasn't asked. There wasn't a public hearing put together for a resolution. Okay, I guess that's my time. But in closing, I would just like to say, I don't know, was that my time? Yeah, I guess so. In closing, I would just like to say, please, there's a reason why Governor Leon Guerrero is the governor. And we have an, it's an election year. The people of Guam can change that come November. But I just ask you, let's continue to support her. You know, I don't think she makes decisions that's going to harm us. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Thank you to all the panel. Thank you for taking the time to be here in person. Sidoos Masih. We're going to now, uh, hear from the Department of Public Health and Social Services. I would ask, uh, them to come in. Deputy Director Lauren Duñez. Deputy Director Terry Uggan. Dr. Annette David, Chairman Guam State Epidemiological Work Group. Fernando Estevez, Incident Commander. Chima Mibakwin, Tuberculosis and Hansen's Disease Control Program Manager. Dr. Robert Leon Guerrero, Interim Chief Medical Officer. Tess Archangel. Bureau of Public Welfare. If there's anyone in the lobby who's here to testify, please sign in with the table right inside the public hearing room. Again, I've asked everyone to please, uh, limit their testimony out of courtesy to, from three to five minutes, please. And I've asked that the Department of Public Health and Social Services representatives, the Guam Memorial Hospital representatives, and the Physicians Advisory Group representatives also remain for questions from senators Is there anyone else from public health? All right, the panel is going to be sworn in by our Sergeant of Arms. Thank you.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, you all affirm that any and all information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God. Madam Chair, may I proceed?
Sidoos Masih. Thank you again for being here. We'll begin with the Deputy Director, Lauren Duñez. Can you please confirm whether you are here on behalf of the director or the department?
Thank you very much. Hafaday, Madam Speaker, Therese Amtralahi. Madam Vice Speaker, Tina Rose Munya Barnes. And members of the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. My name is Lauren Duñez, Deputy Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. And I represent the Director of the Department. Thank you for this opportunity to present testimony on behalf of the department regarding Resolution Number 291-36 relative to terminating the emergency health powers created by 10 GCA Chapter 19 pursuant to 10 GCA Section 19405C in order to restore the civil rights of the people of Guam. We, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, do not support Resolution Number 291-36. On March 14th, 2020, the governor of Guam, Imagahagan Guahan Lourdes A. Leon Guerrero, signed Executive Order 2020-03 declaring a state of emergency for the island of Guam. Prior to this, um, declaration, we were told that with the pandemic, we may reach 3,000-plus deaths. At the peak of this pandemic, our community experienced an increase in COVID-19 cases, test positivity rate, patients requiring hospitalization, including those in intensive care and on ventilators. We had 102 COVID-19 patients in the hospital. We had set up emergency medical tents to accommodate all of them. But we needed more than emergency facilities. We needed nurses. We needed staff. We needed to pull all available medical personnel to strengthen public health's ability to direct our medical personnel. Governor Lou Leon Guerrero, pursuant to the Emergency Health Powers Act, transferred the direction, personnel, and functions of health counselors, nurses, and social workers from the Guam Department of Education to Department of Public Health and Social Services to perform and facilitate the response and recovery programs, including contact tracing, isolation home visits, testing, working at the hospital, vaccinations, and the call center for the duration of the suspension of in-person class instruction. This is just one critical example of the need for flexibility in reallocating resources during the public health emergency. Additionally, should the local public health emergency declaration be terminated, we stand to lose over $2 million in monthly supplemental nutrition assistance program known as the SNAP COVID-19 emergency allocation. Alum, allotments, I'm sorry. The receipt of this supplemental benefit is dependent on both the public health emergency declaration of the Secretary of the Health and Human Services and a local declaration. The local public health emergency declaration authorizes the Department of Public Health and Social Services with the approval of Imagahagan Guahan to exercise all powers enumerated in Chapter 19 of Title 10 Guam Code annotated. The responsibilities granted to the department as the public health authority served an instrumental role in enforcing the implementation of COVID-19 mitigation strategies and other non-pharmaceutical interventions to deter the spread of the virus, such as ceasing nonessential operations, mask-wearing, social distancing, and cleaning, and disinfection of high-contact surfaces. Such measures provided the means for the public to control the spread of the disease, not just to protect themselves, but to protect others around them, thus empowering them to actively participate in the island's response to COVID-19. Ending the local public health emergency would remove the department's ability to enforce these prevention and control measures. COVID-19 also remains a public health emergency of international concern, which was declared by the World Health Organization, the world's leading agency for coordinating response to health emergencies. Today, we are still in a public health emergency of international concern and at risk of international spread of COVID-19 through our borders, notwithstanding our local COVID-19 situation. I will now turn this over to the Deputy Direct-
COVID-19 still poses a great risk to our island.
I'm sorry. Please turn on your microphone. I think it's not on you. The microphone? And if you could just identify yourself for the record, please.
So, Hafaday, I'm Terry Uggan, Acting Director for the Department of Public Health and Social Services. COVID-19 still poses a great risk to our island and our community as the virus and our understanding of it continues to evolve. Globally, since March 28th, 2020, there have been 481,756,671 confirmed cases, including 6,127 and 981 deaths reported to the World Health Organization. Locally, the island has seen a total of 47,181 confirmed cases and 343 deaths. In 2022, we observed our highest case rate ever in this two-year pandemic, which is suspect is the result of the highly transmissible Omicron variant with 20- suspect is the result of the highly transmissible Omicron variant, with 27,520 confirmed cases and 68 deaths reported as of March 29, 2022. Our daily hospitalization rate averaged 14 cases per day. COVID-19 restrictions are already being lifted based on available science and data, and there will be a period where most, if not all, restrictions would eventually be removed and replaced with recommendations. As the island continues to learn new information about this virus and the effects of its emerging variants, we must continue to remain vigilant and be prepared to rapidly respond to reimplement these mitigation measures immediately and the authority to enforce them, which means keeping the public health emergency in place. The life of each member of our community at this time justifies the immediate and necessary protective actions that the public health emergency actualizes. Even one life to this virus is one life too many. The Department of Public Health and Social Services aligns with the World Health Organization and the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention in recognizing that we are still in a state of public health emergency. Thank you again for giving us the opportunity to present this testimony.
Thank you. If we could now hear from other representatives from public health?
Hello. For those that don't know me, I'm Dr. Robert Leon Guerrero. Been a pediatrician on this island since 1984. Currently, pediatrician at Public Health and Acting Chief Public Health Officer. So, I oppose the resolution, and I will let the other speakers talk about the impact, thank you, the impact of money extenders for this, for this act. My intention is to explain in words that most people, especially those most impacted, those are over 60 or comorbidities like myself, in words that they can understand why we do what we do. So, in the beginning, this COVID was explained as PCOR, which is in relation to the typhoon conditions and stuff, to correlate with the storms that we received. Those that are my age who suffered through Typhoon Pamela back in 1976, it left devastation in its wake. Over 95% of all the utility poles were down, so that left us without water, power, and telephone. The reason why we didn't have water is because they couldn't run the pumps at the water stations. I lived in Timoni, where water was back in two months, power in four, telephone in nine months, and that's because I lived near the hospital. Most other villages were not so lucky. Utilities crews from Hawaii Virgin Islands came to help in establishing the utilities. They were able to come because emergency declaration was started. The typhoon had already passed. There was no fear of typhoon causing any more damage, but the declaration remained in effect to get the, the city of, I mean, the island of Guam back on its feet. COVID-19 is similar in that respect, in that it came in and devastated Guam, actually still is devastating Guam. We're not done with this infection. States in which mask mandates and vaccinations are low have a 2%, a two-times higher rate of hospitalizations and death. Schools where mask mandates were enforced versus not had a higher rate of infections. And I'm sorry, I wish I brought some of this information, the studies that show what it did. In regards to the mentioning of some of these modalities being not approved, they are approved. They're just emergency approval. To take care, for instance, Pfizer, which is now formally approved, Pfizer, when it was first studied, they broke it up into two groups, one receiving vaccine, one receiving no vaccine. What they did was every week ask questions and see if they had caught the disease. So, within, I guess, months, they noticed that one set of, one set of patients had mortality rate consistent with the rest of the nation, where the others did not. It was dramatically different. So, in a double-blind study, people who gave the shots didn't know what, what shots were being given to the patients receiving it, and people who drew up the vaccines, I mean, drew up the shots, didn't know which one had, which patient got the vaccine and which one got the placebo. It would be unethical, let me say that again, unethical to continue the study without presenting the findings that was so apparent in the beginning. And that's why the emergency declaration was given, to give this vaccine to prevent further deaths, and it does prevent deaths. I wish it was a lot better vaccine, but you know, it was created by man, and man's not perfect. This disease doesn't operate like a regular disease. My son, when he was young, before he could get the vaccine, got measles. He continues to have antibodies to measles even without getting the measles shot. This disease, in natural immunity, they're up to, within three months, are able to get the disease again, and I've known people who've got it three or four times. So, you can't really expect the vaccine to be much better than that. That's why we need to continue to give the vaccine. That's why we continue to need to give the booster shots and just to protect. So, in conclusion, in order to do these things that I thought, I think are necessary, we need to continue to have the Emergency Power Act. By the way, the Emergency Power Act does not prevent us from lifting or adding on restrictions. That's a totally different process. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Paul.
Puanasian Hafaday, Senators, I'm Dr. Annette David, and I am here as a private citizen and a public health physician who provides advice upon request to the Department of Public Health and Social Services. I am also presenting this testimony on behalf of Dr. Joel Rubio as well. As physicians who have been practicing in Guam for over two decades and who have been actively participating in the COVID-19 pandemic mitigation efforts, we submit this testimony opposing Resolution Number 291-36. The COVID-19 pandemic took the entire world by surprise. SARS-CoV-2, the virus that is responsible for this pandemic, had never been known to mankind. As a novel pathogen, it was capable of infecting virtually everybody in the world, and it was highly transmissible and capable of causing severe illness and death, especially among the elderly and those with comorbidities. And you factor in the ease of global travel and airborne transmission, and this virus rapidly spread across the world and entered into our island community. A public health emergency of this magnitude and gravity requires an immediate and coordinated response. The Organic Act of Guam and the laws of our island grant our governor the authority to declare a public health emergency. The emergency declaration of a public health emergency in Guam back in March 2020 by Governor Lou Leon Guerrero permitted swift action to mitigate the spread and devastation from COVID-19. When confronted with a completely new and lethal pathogen, it is best to act with prudence and caution. This is particularly critical when the costs of hasty and poorly thought-out actions involve not just lost revenue, but lost lives. Today, with two years' worth of accumulated knowledge about SARS-CoV-2 and with a growing armamentarium to prevent and treat COVID-19 infection, it's easy to look back and cast judgments about actions taken early in the pandemic, calling these draconian when in reality these were judicious actions taken to protect our community. In fact, these early and drastic actions by our leadership, when there was no guidance in the entire world on what to do, no playbook, no previous experience, no data, no guidelines, these were the ethical choice for that moment in time. Anything less would have exposed our island community to the ravages of a pathogen at the time when the global community had nothing, zero, to fight it with. Crises have a way of testing leadership, and good leaders do what is right during times of crisis, even when it's not easy or popular. Our leaders did the right thing back in 2020. Today, we have local data and a framework established by the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to guide our actions in mitigating COVID-19. The CDC framework relies on three important elements: vaccination coverage, community-level disease metrics, and other local metrics to guide decisions for addressing COVID-19. This framework implicitly acknowledges that each state and territory has its own local context that greatly influences decision-making, and CDC acknowledges that policy and program actions should be guided by local data and the local situation. Using this framework, Guam is currently at the moderate-risk level, having transitioned very recently from the high-risk level. Our government leadership is using this framework and tracking local data carefully to guide the gradual lifting of restrictions, ensuring that, that our community remains safe even as we loosen up community preventive measures. However, and this is really critical, Guam is not yet at the low-risk category. The pandemic is not yet over. At any time, resurgence is possible, and it is essential that the multi-agency coordination continue as we navigate the transition from moderate to low-risk and from pandemic to endemic status. Last week, some European countries and several U.S. mainland states and cities began reporting an uptick in cases and hospitalizations. We need to ensure that our local government sustains the ability to respond quickly to any resurgences and to the emergence of new variants. This is best accomplished by maintaining the state of emergency until such time that the World Health Organization declares the pandemic to be finally and truly over. To rescind the public health emergency prematurely is unjustifiable, unwise, and very likely unethical. Pandemic response is an operational issue, and it is best carried out by the executive branch of government, supported by advice from public health and medical experts. It requires the adroit management of multiple complex streams of activity, including data collection and surveillance, diagnosis and treatment, public health and preventive measures, enforcement, environmental interventions, risk communication, community mobilization, health inequity mitigation, expanding universal health coverage, health human resource augmentation, and many others. Resolution Number 291-36 appears to focus primarily on procurement and funding allocations, but this really misses the complexity of responding to a public health emergency. For this reason, we believe it may be short-sighted and premature. To summarize, the COVID-19 pandemic is not yet over. Guam is currently at the moderate-risk level and does not yet qualify to be at the low-risk category, and our community relies on the state of public health emergency to ensure that our government can respond swiftly and decisively to any changes in pandemic status, recognizing that the response to the pandemic is a complex, multi-sectoral undertaking. For these reasons, we cannot support the resolution and respectfully request our senators to not pursue it. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Dr. David. Mr. Chima.
My name is Chima Mbakwem. I work with the Department of Public Health and Social Services. I actually manage the tuberculosis and Hessen disease program, and we basically manage airborne infections, and we understand that COVID-19 is an airborne infection. And looking at the, the time of transmissibility is 15 minutes, in contrast to TB, which is eight hours of exposure. And what I want to say is, it is a wrong time for us to ask for removing the public health emergency. I've heard what other speakers have said about what level of restrictions we had in place at the beginning. The truth of the story, as Dr. Annette stated here, was that at the beginning, there was nothing. Nothing was known. A lot of us were thrown into the fire because of our experience in infectious disease and mostly airborne infections. We had to use the strategies that we knew at that point would help us contain the spread of the virus. We had to use stringent public health and social measures to contain the spread of the virus. But as we moved forward, we realized, or with science, there were now more understanding of the disease, which actually helped us moving forward. That is how the restrictions started being reduced. So, today, there are only two ways to stop the epidemic: cut off transmission completely or we leave with the disease. But today, we cannot make that decision because there is not enough data for us to make that decision today. So, as we continue to be in this state of public health emergency, I would ask that we do not move forward with this bill so that we continue to react and respond until science and data makes it possible for us to make decisions that will continue to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Mbakwem. Sarki, yeah?
Good evening, Senators. I just want to say a few words with regards to this ending of public health emergency.
Sorry, Tess, can you repeat that?
Okay, I just want to say-
And state your name for the record, and then louder, louder if you can, yeah.
Okay, for the record, my name is Maria Teresa Archangel, and I work for Department of Public Health and Social Services, Division of Public Welfare. I just want to say a few words with regards to this resolution. At the height of COVID-19 pandemic, people struggled to secure adequate food supplies and medical care. As the pandemic continued to spread, people were forced to stay home, some workers lost their jobs, some local businesses closed permanently, and healthcare providers, especially the hospital, healthcare frontliners, were strained due to increasing number of patients and fear of contracting the disease. The unemployment rate went up from 4.3% in March 2019 to 16.5% in March 2021, based on Guam Bureau of Labor Statistics unemployment rate. Amidst the economic suffering, uncertainty, and challenges created by COVID-19 pandemic, the Division of Public Welfare continuously provides support to the people of Guam by providing basic necessities of life. Our federal partners provided flexibilities to streamline the access to more benefits by accelerating the program applications through the suspension of reassessment of income eligibility for Medicaid, accelerating the process of state plan amendment to increase the Medicaid provider reimbursement by 10% during COVID-19 pandemic, and increased program income guideline to reduce the uninsured and assist the underinsured on their healthcare needs, and also approval of ABD waiver and non-face-to-face interview requirements. Furthermore, additional federal aids were provided, such as Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Emergency Alotment, which- Program Emergency Allotment, which provided Guam 28 million in fiscal year 2021. And prior to that, we were given 15 million, and just this fiscal year, this year, we already issued 15 million to our beneficiaries. Also, additional benefits, additional funding that was given to us is the SNAP, the SNAP pandemic EBT, or electronic benefit transfer, for our students. Last year, we issued 32 million. This year, or just right now, we're issuing summer PEBT, which more likely we're going to issue 13 to 14 million. Ending the local public health emergency will also end these supplemental SNAP benefits to our 15 to 18 household, or roughly 51,000 eligibles under the program. I just want to state that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Archangel. Mr. Estevs, Senator Estevs.
Fide, Madam Speaker, and members of this esteemed body. My name is Fernando Estevs, and I'm testifying in opposition to Resolution 291. I became the COVID-19 Incident Commander for Public Health on December 16, 2021. Before that, I served as an advisor specializing in areas of medical planning, operations, and logistics with Public Health and the Guam National Guard Surgeon Cell. In my current position of COVID-19 Incident Commander, I broadly oversee our island's COVID-19 response activities. It is my job to anticipate, plan, prepare, and execute necessary actions to accomplish established goals, including our ultimate goal of minimizing the spread of COVID-19 on Guam and keeping our hospitalizations manageable. My testimony will focus on the impact Resolution 291 will have on public health response activities. Public health response activities range from surveillance, containment, testing, vaccinations, treatments, and community outreach. Like many public health activities, the public's familiarity with these operations may be limited to the instances in which they themselves needed these services, whether it is getting tested or vaccinated, or even isolating after having contracted COVID-19. Outside of these encounters, most people are not aware of the behind-the-scenes work that drives our response activities. I assure you, this is not inadvertent. Part of our mission is to minimize the disruption that our operations have on the community while ensuring that the services are robust and available when you need it. The full scope of our operations is extensive, as the personnel require to ensure the services delivered smoothly are delivered smoothly. This has included airport screening, quarantine, isolation, monoclonal treatments, community testing, laboratory results notification, and logistic support, just to name a few. Most of these response activities are not organic to public health. This means we had to develop and refine these processes during the course of the public health emergency. A few of these activities are part of DPHSS's existing scope, but far exceeded the existing operational scale. I think I can speak for the entire island when I thank the Guam National Guard for their service to our public health response. Nowhere else on the island could you find such a ready force of consummate professionals that could have met the needs of the island. Federal funding for the Guam National Guard to aid in COVID-19 is not contingent on the public health emergency, so that the record is clear. But the existence of funding will not matter if the Guam National Guard is deactivated. Resolution 291, if passed, would force the immediate deactivation of the Guam National Guard. Ten GCA Section 63500 requires an emergency declaration as provided in Executive Order 2020-3. The Guam National Guard remains a critical partner of public health in our operations, which continues to effectively reduce our overall cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. Public Health and the Guam National Guard have worked hard to achieve the various statistics that have given this body the luxury of considering a declaration that the pandemic is over. I assure you, it is not. As the Incident Commander, I tell you that that day is coming, but it is not today. With any emergency, there is a ramp-up of response activities. But with this and any other operations, it's equally as important to scale down appropriately and in a methodical and deliberate manner. We would all prefer to announce the pandemic is over and the public health emergency is no longer necessary. But until then, even as our numbers improve, we must transition our emergency operations to a steady state organically and carefully to ensure that we are prepared for recovery and the potential of resurgence. Emergency management should begin at the organic level, the agency itself, then aided by external agencies and the National Guard. And lastly, federal aid can be requested, such as FEMA direct support and DoD medical teams, though the drawdown occurs in the reverse order as well. At the tail end of our Delta surge, we balance our response activities with the planned drawdown of external assistance. At the time, the Guam National Guard force went from nearly 200 to around 80 personnel, and extension of direct support from FEMA would not be requested. The arrival of Omicron put the drawdown on pause, and we quickly executed our surge plan and brought the force back up to 182 at our peak. Utilizing available operation data and trends, we have scaled back or ceased operations, for example, the QFAC, ISAFAC, University of Guam, international passenger screening and testing operations, amongst others. At this point, based on our operational data and trends, we will not be requesting an extension past April 16 for FEMA direct support. Currently, we've drawn down the Guam National Guard to 117, with plans to reduce it to zero no later than mid-June. Regardless of the outcome of this resolution, we continue to prepare for any potential surges, but the passage of Resolution 291 creates anticipated delays of two to three weeks should another surge occur. That is a risk I advise against. Despite our drawdown plan set for mid-June, we maintain operations and anticipate future operations. Operation Homebound continues, a joint response activity addressing health disparities of our indigent and underserved community members, averaging 105 vaccinations weekly over the last five weeks. For this type of operation, these are good numbers. These are individuals who, for many reasons, have not had access to vaccinations or information. Additionally, we take advantage of these encounters to assist individuals with social services ranging from Medicaid, Medicare, MIP, SNAP, housing, disabilities, education, food distribution, and many others. We continue vaccinations and testing statically at geographical locations, south, central, and north. We anticipate the approval, and actually, just an update, there was the approval from the FDA, but soon pending from the CDC, the second booster, and intend to get it to the highest-risk individuals composed primarily of those aged 50 and older. Based on our current data as of 30 March 2022, of those who have received their first booster, we anticipate a total number within that age range of 50 and over, 29,807, as our anticipated demand that we're preparing for. The passage of Resolution 291 would decrease accessibility for the anticipated 29,807 to avail of an additional booster. Grants provided to support these activities are limited in scope and mostly cover the technical positions, but lack in the general support provided by the guard. The medics from the guard and EMTs hired by public health serve as vaccinators. The passage of Resolution 291 would immediately end this, as the authority rests exclusively within the Emergency Health Powers Act in Section 19608 as defined in Section 19604. Vaccinations would be restricted to nurses, and our nursing vacancies remain unfilled due to high demand globally. There just aren't enough nurses on island, and we can anticipate that this shortage will continue in the future. The legislature has a critical role to play in this transition by drafting bills that would extend certain emergency measures beyond the public health emergency declaration and enable us to continue to avail of these services, of these medical personnel, when the public emergency ends. In closing, as a combat veteran, I've come to understand that hindsight is a luxury of the living. The balance of life and livelihood is not a trivial matter. Harsh judgments of leadership decisions come with public service. I understand that personally. But the burden of looking in the mirror and asking, "Did I do enough, or did I give it my all?" is a burden carried only by those responsible for the protection of life. While life goes on for everybody else, the scars remain for those that served and with the loved ones of those we failed to save. Lastly, as a former member of this esteemed body, [speaking Spanish] [speaking Spanish] Thank you.
Sisusmasi, Senator Estevs.
If I may, I could just do the English translation real quick for the record. I'm asking you, senators, be mindful when you consider the quote-unquote "1%." Don't forget, the 1% is predominantly our elderly. It's wrong to consider the deaths of the 1% of our elderly so callously. It goes against our moral values. It goes against the values of Guam. Very respectfully, Fernando Estevs.
Sisusmasi, Senator Estevs. All right, that completes the public health panel. I want to ask you humbly to please stay, if you can, to accept questions from the senators after all have testified. And I also want to personally thank each of you for your service to all of us during this emergency. Sisusmasi. We'll now sanitize and then receive the panel from Guam Memorial Hospital and the Physicians' Advisory Group and University of Guam, GRMC, and Dr. Wen. Sergeant Amorams, if you can, please swear the panel in. We should have the Director of GMH, Lillian Posadas, Dr. Annie Bredalio, Associate Administrator Medical Services, Christine Takero, Administrator Nursing Services, Dr. Nathaniel Berg, who's online on Zoom, Chairman of the Physicians Advisory Group, Dr. Michael Robinson, Guam Seventh-day Adventist Clinic, Member of the Physicians Advisory Group, Dr. Hoan Nguyen, Dr. Margaret Hattori-Uchima, Dean, Assistant Professor of Nursing at the University of Guam, Jennifer Cruz, SVP and Chief Nursing Officer, GRMC. All right, please swear them.
Can you please stand and raise your right hand? Under penalty of perjury, we all affirm that any and all information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Madam Chair.
Sisusmasi. All right. Ms. Posadas, as the Administrator, I will yield to you, and you can determine which order the GMH representatives will testify in. Sisusmasi.
Hello. Sisusmasi, Speaker Talai, and Senator Chris Drania, Senator Telo Titigun, Senator Joanne Brown. My name is Lillian Posadas. To my right is Christine Takero, who is our Nursing Director, and then to her right is Dr. Annie Bredalio. She is our Chief Medical Officer. So the three of us will then speak and testify on this Resolution 291. Thank you for the invitation and opportunity to speak regarding Resolution 291-36. My name is Lillian Perez Posadas. I am a registered nurse with over 40 years of experience. That's how old I am. I'm a Nkoo. And I have that experience in the clinical, in academics, in leadership, and now as the hospital administrator, CEO of Guam's only government public hospital. Throughout the many years of nursing practice, and most especially in the current role that I occupy, I think I've earned enough credibility and wisdom to express my perspectives and testimony against this resolution. With all due respect, Speaker and Senators, the decision and the determination to end this public health emergency needs to remain within the authorization and jurisdiction of the Governor of Guam, who has the clinical background and the experience and the expertise to make the logical, practical, and sound decisions in terms of the overall healthcare needs for the citizens of Guam. We at the hospital are the ones that battled, that faced, and we lived this pandemic every single day since January 2020 and even to this day. And while we did not receive the first confirmed COVID patient until March, we were already gearing up and preparing for the arrival of patients with COVID infection. And mind you, we had absolutely no clinical guidelines, no policies, no protocols, other than the strict airborne isolation principles and standards that we needed to use to treat these individuals and to manage their care. Fast forward to this day, yes, the numbers are in a downward trend. However, just when we thought that because the hospitalized COVID census dropped significantly for several months, the numbers picked up rapidly during 2020, 2021, and then recently, January 2022 to March. And although the hospitalization COVID census is again in a downward trend, a recent CDC report with empirical evidence that an Omicron BA.2 is now dominant in Asia, in Europe, and in the U.S. The communication I received this morning from our HHS partners reports that as of March 29, which was just yesterday, data from CDC shows that the BA.2 variant is now circulating with a frequency exceeding 50% in several of the HHS regions. In Region 5, which is Illinois, Indiana, Michigan, Minnesota, Ohio, and Wisconsin; Region 9, which is American Samoa, Arizona, California; Sinamai, Guam, Hawaii, Nevada, Republic of Palau, and Armee; Region 10, which is Alaska, Idaho, Oregon, and Washington; and the other regions, Region 1 and Region 2, those are the Upper East Coast states, those states have exceeded the 50% prevalence of the BA.2 variant. Based on this recent development and report, it'll only be a matter of time we will see another surge on our island. Hence, it is absolutely not in our best interest for the health, safety, and wellness of our people to end, to terminate, this public health emergency at this time. If you choose to end and terminate this public health emergency, we at the hospital will lose the many resources, not just monetary, but the human resources, such as the travel nurses, who we needed and we've relied on. And with the expedited process for them to get their license to practice and be on boots on the ground at the hospital, this public health emergency has really helped us bring on more travel nurses and continue the deployment of these travel nurses to GMH. And Christine will give you more details in terms of how many. The- The alternate care facility, which is our SNF, that FEMA, we submitted our public assistance reimbursement for the retrofitting and getting that facility as an isolation facility. FEMA, again, we may lose the FEMA funding for that, and so we're not going to have another isolation facility in the event we have a surge. The individuals, these are individuals in our island who completed their nursing training, their nursing education, but are not licensed. With a public health emergency, the Licensing Board can grant them temporary work permits so they can work with us, and we have had those individuals come and work with us. Same with Nurses Aids. We've also brought in some radiology technologists and respiratory therapists through the travel agencies that we contracted. Again, with this public health emergency, we can get their license and get them to be working at the hospital. So these are just some of the resources and the benefits that if we keep this public health emergency, the hospital will continue to be in a prepared status to them if there is that surge of patients. And there are times when, you know, we think we don't have, the census has gone down, boom, we get 10 COVID patients into the ER. So, you know, we just have to continue staying prepared. Speaker and Senators, as a nurse with extensive years of experience, I urge you not to end the emergency health powers as established by law in 10 GCH Chapter 19. For the health and survival of our island community, this is not the time to end this public health emergency. I ask you to listen to us clinicians, to us physicians and healthcare professionals. Allow us to work with you to help preserve, protect, and safeguard the health, safety, and wellness of the citizens of Guam. Help us to safely and slowly transition from this emergency state to a safe and steady state. Given our fragile and limited capacity and resources at Guam's only hospital, we need to maintain a preparedness structure. Because this pandemic is not just a local pandemic, it's a national and a global pandemic, I'd like to share a letter that I just received today from the Association of Hospitals, American Hospitals. A group of them wrote a letter to the Secretary of Health and Human Services asking that they renew the COVID-19 public health emergency. We believe this is an important step to ensure our members can serve their patients and communities during this pandemic and beyond. While we are heartened that COVID-19 infections and hospitalizations are decreasing in the United States, hospitals and health systems are still dealing with COVID-19 patients and deaths on a daily basis, similarly with us at the hospital. Over the weekend, we lost two individuals, just today, another individual with COVID. So we see these, you know, these effects of the COVID infection. We are also concerned about the vulnerable populations, like children under five years old, and the immunocompromised, who cannot be vaccinated. In addition, there may still be additional surges to address. Case numbers in Europe are rising due to the Omicron subvariant and may be a harbinger of the potential for another increase in COVID cases in this country, in the U.S., and also us here in Guam. Regardless of the potential new cases increase, our members continue to face challenges related to workforce shortages and staff burnout, continuing disruptions in the supply chain leading to shortages of supplies and the need for further clinical guidance regarding the symptoms of and the best course of treatment for long COVID-19 patients. In addition, our hospitals and health systems are increasingly caring for patients with a variety of health needs for which care had to be delayed due to the pandemic. This includes the extraordinary need for behavioral health services for many who have suffered during the pandemic from stress, isolation, and other triggers for depression, as well as substance abuse. The declaration, the public health declaration allows us to take certain actions in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. These include waivers of certain Medicare, Medicaid, CHIP, and HIPAA privacy rule requirements, such as conditions of participation, staff licensure that I mentioned, and for practicing in other states, limitations from liability for certain providers, sanctions under the MTALA Act for direction or location of an individual. These are just some, again, lists of examples of why we need to keep this public health emergency, not just at the national level, but also here in our island. We understand the desire to move on from the pandemic, and we too would like to return to focusing on non-pandemic-related healthcare in our communities, especially here on our island. Yet it is important to be prepared for potential disruptions to the healthcare delivery system. The public health allows our members the flexibilities and resources to respond to the COVID-19 virus. And as I say, again, we need to keep this state of preparedness. Thank you.
Thank you very much, CEO Posadas.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Caro.
Hafadi, Speaker Terlai, Senator Chris Duenias, Senator Ada, Senator Blas, Senator Taidegui, and Senator Brown. My name is Christine Takerow. I am the Administrator of Nursing Services at the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. I am a nurse, I am a mother, I am a daughter of Guam. I am here to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution that would abruptly terminate the declaration of the public health emergency. As an island and as an employee from GMHA, we have endured through each COVID surge and continue to recover this longstanding pandemic. The declaration of an emergency has permitted our island the ability to urgently pull supplies, equipment, and crisis staffing resources in an order that allows us to respond to the needs of the community. Since March 15, 2020, our hospital has treated 2,993 of our island's sickest COVID-positive individuals. Immense efforts from all levels have been placed to be able to respond to this COVID pandemic. All agencies have been working together to organize response efforts. Even with our limitations at GMHA, we have been able to support training, conduct fit testing to our community frontliners, and help with medical equipment and supplies. Looking back and reflecting on our hospital's response, we have, during this declaration of emergency, we have had the support to be the first designated COVID hospital. We have had the support to move departments and patient units around in order to accommodate the influx of COVID admissions. As an aging building, we have the support to evaluate our electrical system in order to run more ventilators and hemodialysis machines. We've had the support to create more negative pressure rooms for respiratory precautions. We have the support to make tough decisions, such as hold surgery services so that we could allocate nurses to COVID areas and use the recovery room for more admissions. We've had the support to empower our employees, who were afraid, like all of us, of COVID. We've had the support to help others in the community, such as provide cleaning and decontamination services to the community isolation facility when services were not available. We've had the support to mobilize our own clinical and nonclinical staff for COVID response efforts. We've had the support to process crisis staffing. We have had the ability to hire nurses under the emergency work, emergency temporary work permit, and we've hired about 155 nurses over two years under an emergency temporary work permit, which allowed our hospital to open up more beds and increase our ability to take more ICU patients. We were also able to hire more nursing assistants under the emergency temporary work permit. We have the support to share our nurses, when we could, with our sister hospital, GRMC. We have the support to stay with patients at the bedside when they had no access to their loved ones. We have the support to find courage and strength as we watched patients who were struggling to breathe. And we had the support to work hard when our skill set, higher skill sets were required. We received help from the University of Guam nursing students to increase our capabilities in caring for more patients. And likewise, we have received much support from sister agencies, whether it be a vehicle to transport meals, medications, and supplies to and from our skilled nursing facility COVID isolation unit, or extra manpower from the Guam Army National Guard to support our emergency room and intensive care units. Our Health Professional Licensing Office had developed processes to expedite and ensure the hospital and other healthcare organizations can be adequately staffed and ready to respond to the needs of our community. Abruptly ending emergency efforts can negatively impact our healthcare system and other efforts that are in place. We are very thankful that our community is in a better place today. We attribute this to the organized response efforts that have been well orchestrated. We understand the need and equally desire for our island to return to a level of normalcy. We are almost there. It is imperative we continue to transition safely. We need your support now to ensure that we do not end our emergency response abruptly. The urgency to return to normalcy does not outweigh the risks of affecting vulnerable areas in the event we are not convincingly in the clear. I believe that we should follow the course and continue to taper to a level of normalcy safely. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Caro. Dr. Bredal.
Good evening, Senators. I'm tasked with reading a statement from Dr. Uggan, who is our COVID Medical Director. She was unable to make it tonight. Buenos dias, Hafadi. My name is Jolene Uggan, born and raised on Guam, a pulmonary and critical care physician, Associate Administrator of Clinical Services for GMH, COVID Medical Director for GMH and Emergency Medical Services, Member of the Physician Advisory Group to the Governor, and Mother of Two Special Little Boys. I read out these titles to make you understand the degree of my involvement in this pandemic during the past two years, as our community has been taxed with a deadly virus that has forced us to work tirelessly on our processes to protect each other, our families, and our patients, to sacrifice our lives in order to get the job done. As the dust starts to settle again, we thought it was over until it wasn't. A year later, here we are, but this time it's different. The 200% that the front line has put out since March 2020 is getting a lot more challenging to continue. There are now frontliners who are changing careers or seeking early retirement. Exhaustion is quite the understatement. With all due respect, Senators, I am disappointed to see that the first opportunity to find process improvements and create transitions for our island to return to normal, we use it instead to terminate the emergency declaration without the full investigation of how that will affect our operations as a community, how that will impact the delivery of healthcare at the bedside. Briefly and in no specific order, without repeating too much of what was already mentioned, what you're asking may interfere with FEMA reimbursements for our healthcare personnel. It may remove the emergency temporary privileges and licensure to expedite the onboarding of our critical healthcare personnel, from nurses to respiratory therapists to physicians. It may stop the differential pay to the front line without any transition. This small incentive allows them to keep going. It may result in removing the National Guard gung medics in our hospital and in the community who play a critical role in patient care. It may remove our ability to continue to obtain equipment and supplies to serve our patients better. I recognize that not everyone is directly affected by this. However, our health services will be greatly impacted, and all of our people will be, at some point, indirectly affected. Lifting the emergency declaration without a transition is irresponsible, and it's our job as a community to work together and make that transition happen for our island. Undang kaluna, Sidosmasi.
Sidosmasi. Dr. Bredal, would you like to add anything to that?
You know, it has been a long two years. I listened to the testimony earlier, and I do want to remind people that the public health emergency declaration allows the government to operate in a different manner than normal operations. I don't think that's necessarily tied to mask mandates. I think COVID numbers are misleading. Even with very low COVID numbers, the impact that this COVID crisis has had on not only our community, but on our healthcare services, and not only here in Guam, everybody in the nation, probably the world, is struggling to figure out how to unwind from the crisis and how to survive the crisis. I think not only are businesses trying to figure out how to reopen, hospitals, clinics have also suffered devastating economic impact. And I think it's really important to really recognize that these financial investments that the federal government is making are crucial. And I don't think you can tell that by the COVID numbers. And as we look around the world, and it's hard to define how the virus works. It's an ongoing process. There's so much information to process on a daily, on a weekly basis. It's not really just numbers. And so I think the healthcare community here has done the best that we can do to follow the guidelines of our federal counterparts, because that's how medicine is regulated in this day and age. We follow recommendations and we apply them to our community. And I think you have a panel of experts here. All the physicians are not in support, at least that have testified so far, of lifting this. And I think this is a healthcare crisis, and I think you really should listen to the healthcare community, because we're better able to interpret all the data and to try to make the best recommendation that we can for our community to keep everybody, and we all want to go back to normal, too. We are not, believe me, if we could all leave healthcare and do what we normally do for fun and hoping that somebody else will come and do our jobs, I think all of us in this room who have been working for more than 20 years are ready to, but until we get the resources to have people to replace us, I think we're all trying to figure out what that soft landing is, and I don't think this is it.
Sidosmasi, Dr. Bredal. And thank you again to all of you from GMH, and my sincere thank you to everyone at GMH for their service to our entire community during this pandemic. And I know, as you say, it's not over. They continue to work to this day. Sidosmasi. All right, we now have Dr. Nathaniel Berg, Chairman of the Physicians Advisory Group. And so, Dr. Robinson, you're also a member of the Physicians Advisory Group. All right, so we'll hear from Dr. Berg first. He's on via online.
Speaker Terlai, first, thank you very much for allowing me to provide testimony via Zoom. And I also like to acknowledge Senators Duenias, Taidegui, Brown, Adam Blas, for also allowing me to share testimony today. And I'll do my best, as a man of too many words, I'll do my best to keep it short and again, as Dr. Robinson said, not to be redundant. I think it's important regarding the legislation to look at the component of it that is perhaps the one that we in the, who have been involved in the delivery and management of COVID-related illnesses, treatments, testing, and the like, the line that causes the most, is most bothersome for us. And it says that the legislature may terminate the declaration of state of public health emergency at any time. emergency at any time from the date of original declaration upon the finding that the occurrence of illness or health condition that caused emergency does, not, or no longer poses a high probability of a large or a death in the affected population. So the key word there is the probability. Probability has been extremely difficult for us. COVID surges have been and are unpredictable, which means you can't really calculate out those probabilities. I doubt that anybody would disagree with that. The variants have been unpredictable. I well appreciate what Dr. Uggan just said, quote, "We thought it was over until it wasn't." We were all feeling good last December and even last summer in parts of Europe, that everything was good, and we no longer had a threat to our community. And then suddenly, this variant develops in South Africa that no one predicted, and we're all sort of cautiously watching, saying, "It seems like it should be a big deal." And now everyone in the world knows the word Omicron. So fortunately, thank God, nothing else we can say except thank God, that it turned out to be not so dangerous a bug. Still killed a ton of people, but most of us who got COVID, including myself, simply got sick to varying degrees. My whole family got it, some extremely sick, some not so sick. But we didn't know that was coming. And it makes it... When you say we want... the legislature can state with confidence that Omicron no longer poses a high probability of a large or a death in our community, I don't believe that that is scientifically sound. Probability is not something that anyone has been very good at with regard to COVID. We actually don't condemn. Those of us who have been looking at this, including the members of the PAC, we don't condemn anyone asking for an explanation of any restrictions, for an explanation as to why we feel this state of public health emergency remain in place. We don't. And we can all be critical regarding our own... Look in the mirror regarding our own prediction, predictions, that is, as well as our leaders' predictions. Think of the conversations that we've had over the course of COVID. I don't believe a single person got it right. No one has emerged having got it right, despite any level of education or common sense or whatever you want to call it. No one has gotten it right. No one's been able to predict it, not one person. And therefore, I think one thing I really would like to see is the professional discussion here with the legislature and with those of us who are providing testimony to say it's not proper to call those who had to make tough decisions nasty names to mock them or condemn them. It's just not right. If someone got it right all the way through, please put your hand up. But I don't think anyone's going to do it. So I would ask that we don't mock those of us who have done our best to make tough decisions. Some of them turned out to be right, some not so right. Some have not been well explained to the public. For example, the roadblocks, which were an assessment to see if we disrupted... if we stopped movement, would we have an impact on the spread of COVID? That was the objective of it. All right, in any case, in the past two years, the COVID-19 pandemic obviously has disrupted virtually every facet of our lives. Now, some people, including the legislature, are entertaining the idea of removing all precautions, including the state of public health emergency. Is the pandemic over? Are we now endemic? I guess is the real question. Well, the textbook definition of endemic is when an illness is always present in a given population. It's always going to be there. But the important thing is that it be at a predictable level. And unlike the waves of COVID cases that we've seen in this pandemic, other conditions can be endemic, COVID, at this point, cannot be called endemic. And by the way, what does endemic for COVID-19 look like in our community? A professor of public health at my alma mater, at Tufts University, named Ramnath Subraman, who's been... become an expert in analyzing the data, if you will, as it comes in, he's declared very simply, "We're not done." Right? We, that is, the PAC whom I'm representing here, don't feel comfortable that achieving an endemic state is done by just declaring that we're endemic. It has to be scientifically sound, and that's part of the reason why we've been really happy to have a real epidemiologist, Dr. Annette David, a real experienced one, assist us. We have all some training in epidemiology and medical school, but we're not trained public health epidemiologists like Dr. David. And certainly, CHIMA has also been extremely helpful. So if we just declare it anyway, what would happen in our community? A major concern is, I guess you could say, endemic for who? People in low-income communities would remain at high risk of death from COVID. We've seen, and I think Dr. Anne Pabutsky, I hope, will be speaking, about the crazy disproportionate number of people who present dead-on arrival in Guam versus the rest of the United States. And we've done our best, including having the CDC come out to help us figure out why. It's very clear that is in low-income communities, and we have a great fear that that will not change simply by causing... by saying we're not in a public health state of emergency. An example, by the way, for Medicaid during COVID, enrollment in Medicaid and the Children's Health Insurance Program, often just called CHIP, grew by 17%. That's the largest increase in the 18-month history of either one of the programs. That is going to cause a problem. If we are no longer in a public health state of emergency, how do we respond to those people who are now seeking more public health resources because they are in public health programs? You do that very carefully is the answer. You don't do it abruptly. The World Health Organization Director General, about two weeks ago, the World Health Organization, the WHO, said that although reported cases and deaths are declining globally, and several countries have lifted restrictions, the pandemic is far from over. Right? So another question you might ask, because there is a bit of condemnation of the overall point of the public health emergency in the language of legislation, and it's okay, but I think it needs to be addressed. Have we needed these measures? Well, you heard from our hospitals, or you will have from GRC, but you certainly heard from GMH regarding the measures that they've needed to respond rapidly to operational threats. That includes both the current challenges and those they've faced in the delivery of care over the pandemic. As Lilian Pazadas just relayed to you, human resources are arguably the biggest challenge facing delivery of health care to our population, at least those seeking care at our public health hospital. And mind you, Lilian is a highly experienced person. That includes as a clinical nurse, she delivered care. I saw Lilian on the wards ages ago. She also... So she has a great deal of experience providing... directly providing care. That's a great thing to have as an administrator. She also has years of just plain administrative experience in both private and public sector in Guam. As the head of the PAC, I meet with her near daily, and the PAC itself respects and listens to her when she tells us about the state of GMH. So our decisions have not been made blindly or through brief meetings. The emergency licenses that she mentioned, they've allowed travel nurses to be added to the hospital teams and to be... to add them on an urgent basis. During the pandemic, I think this number makeup is a surprise to you, we have added 526 nurses. They've all been added appropriately, scrutinized by the Guam Board of Nursing, and as well as the administrative aspects by... at the HPLO. And they've been added urgently. They've been issued urgent nursing licenses, possible only through our being in a declared state of public health emergency. That's just the nurses, 526. For example, the only other example I'll give you is the ICU. We've all seen the ICU numbers go rapidly up and rapidly down. We had no ability to have people tending the ventilators. We have added 21 respiratory therapists during that time. It's been incredibly useful and remains so. So in summary and in closing, so I want to keep my time within a limit, the PAC, the Physicians Advisory Group, agrees with the WHO leadership. They've been clearing their message, quote, this is from the WHO, "We have to remain vigilant." And the Director General of the WHO said, quote, "Although reported cases and deaths are declining globally, and several countries have lifted restrictions, the pandemic is far from over." Finally, the national state of public health emergency is... the Secretary of the Health and Human Services, who makes that declaration, the bottom line, or at least in one of the directives that they have in terms of making that decision as to whether to issue it and as to whether to keep it going, says, "Prior to issuing the declaration, the secretary should consult with public health officials." You have now done so, and I thank you very much for doing so in allowing the public health officials. And you can see that it is unanimous, at least so far in the panel, that the public health officials have advised not removing the state of public health emergency. The Physicians Advisory Group has advised not to remove it, and we listen to the public health. The governor herself, in each of these decisions, has done exactly what the Secretary of the Health and Human Services nationally has done, which is to consult public health officials and others for input and advice before she made that decision. And I thank you for doing the same. We expect a surge when we... as we continue to remove these mandates, and those are totally separable. We're going to continue to remove mandates. We expect a surge. We need to have this state of public health emergency in place and able to respond as rapidly as possible. I thank you very much for allowing me to testify, particularly via Zoom.
Thank you very much, Dr. Berg. If I could humbly ask you to please remain online for questions after all the testimony, I would appreciate that, as well as the GMH representatives. Dr. Robinson?
Hafedé, Madam Speaker and Honorable Senators, I'm Dr. Michael Robinson, family practice physician, serving on the island of Guam since 1998. I give this testimony as a private citizen. I am a member of the Physicians Advisory Group. However, my opinion is my own. Sizusmaasi, for the opportunity to give this oral testimony, position to Resolution 291-36. The pandemic has changed our lives. When the pandemic hit, many of us did not know what to expect. When the governor declared the public health state of emergency, she asked us to join the fight for the island and to be part of the frontliners. Many frontliners stepped up, and their families supported the fight to keep our island home safe from COVID. Many of our families were worried about the frontliners bringing home the deadly virus to them and our children. As an island community, we all work together. I want to take this opportunity to thank the legislature for your support of the island-wide fight in the battle against the pandemic. The teamwork of the frontliners from all branches of society has been inspiring, and the island has given them a hero's welcome. Historically, our island population has not fared as well with prior contagious scourge. High death tolls occurred during the Spanish Flu pandemic of 1918. It killed 780 of Guam citizens. The smallpox pandemic of 1688 decimated the population, leaving about 5,000 persons on island. The current island-wide fight to win the battle against the COVID pandemic has shown us the health care system's vulnerability that we have on Guam. We need to continue to work together to heal our island's health care system and to fix the vulnerabilities that remain. We have a large work that needs to be done for our island home to provide a healthy health care system. This cannot be done alone. We must work together as a team, all rowing together. I want to thank the health care chair for providing this public hearing. I would like to applaud the honorable senators and the honorable governor, Lilia Anguero, for the ongoing work that you are all doing to bring about the creation of a new hospital to our island. This has inspired hope and faith among all of us as we have continued to work together against the COVID virus. I would suggest that our focus as an island also needs to look at how we are going to build a healthy health care system for the people of Guam. We will need many highly qualified personnel to run, staff, and manage a healthy health care system. That includes a newly high-quality hospital and health delivery network. I would suggest that additional topics of discussion might include increased capacity for nursing students, physical therapy students, respiratory therapists, nursing aides, EMT, firefighters, police cadets. We need a nurse practitioner school, a physician assistant school. We need development of managers with MBAs who can run this new health care system. We need radiation technologists, a school to teach ultrasound technicians. We need a rural family medicine program, a general surgery residency program, an OB-GYN residency program. We need to look at universal health care costs and a way to supply universal health to our island's population. We need a strong insurance coverage to fund women's health, children's health, and the menomko of our island. We need to fund wellness activities to stop smoking and diabetes, treat coronary artery disease, reverse gout and high blood pressure. We need a full look at our mental health and how we can better serve those who are suffering with this illness. We need to look at the medical... a medical community, like the Physicians Advisory Group, to regularly focus on the health of the island when the pandemic is over. We need to solve the homeless problem on the island. As health care providers, we are trained to relieve suffering whenever it presents to us. Medicine is not a profession that provides perfect outcomes, but I recommend that we collaborate and build our island's health care infrastructure together to bring about a bright future for our island. I would encourage us to let the governor wind down the pandemic state of emergency in an orderly fashion. I am sure that the Department of Administration is looking at relocating... reallocating more spending towards areas of the economy that promise future growth. It's crucial to shift spending around during this transition time. There are many operational needs for federal fundings that we, the public, are unaware of. However, we elect representative government, and we trust them with the power to do the things we need for them to take care of the public good. The Department of Public Health and Social Service is doing an excellent job. They have been given the responsibility to keep the public safe. I encourage us to let them guide us on the timing of the wind down. Let them... let us encourage them to convey a task force to study what we have learned from this pandemic, so that when the next pandemic come, we are better prepared. I oppose Resolution 291-36, so that we do not end abruptly our effort. Sizusmaasi.
Sizusmaasi, Dr. Robinson. Sorry. Dr. Wen?
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak on this hearing. And I'd like to say thank you for everyone in this room. This is a true frontliner, the Tier 2 SDA, GMH, and GRMC. So we... they are... we are here from the start of the pandemic, and we're still working for it. So this is a great group of people that we sit in this room right now. But no, I along with all the health care professionals...
Sorry, Doctor. Sorry. Can you just please state your full name for the record?
Okay. For the record, I'm Dr. Huang Wen, and I've been practicing Guam since 1995, so been here quite a while. I along with many health care professionals, including Tier 2 SDA, FHP, and GMH and GRMC, have been the frontline since March of 2020. Now, we've seen all the COVID-19 patients along with all the non-COVID patients, and we remain open when everyone else grows due to the uncertainty of the virus. At that time, just like Dr. Mike Robinson say, we are so scared to go home with our family, because we don't know we're going to give to our family or not. We still remain open. We have one goal since March of 2020. Our goal is to take the most appropriate action as a frontliner to ensure the well-being for the people of Guam. And the Tier 2 critic, I know Dr. Robinson understands, act like a pulse of the pandemic. We know when the surge are going up, when the plateau is coming down, because through... we see patients every day as outpatient, and we know when it's going to start it. Through the multiple variants of concern, including Delta, Omicron, we learned a lot about immunization, testing and treatment, infection. The main question we have today is about the status of the public health pandemic emergency and the reason why we're still in the pandemic emergency status at this point. To stay in the pandemic emergency, we really need to clarify our criteria for declaring the emergency status and the criteria for timeline to end the emergency status. This decision can be... cannot be made solely on either politic or financial reason. Unfortunately, from my standpoint, there's a lot of politics involved in this pandemic, and that's not supposed to be. Doing this to help relate to pandemic emergency, this decision should be based on scientific data along with the local population, its comorbidity, and the best people that can make meaningful recommendation are the true frontliners, like all the people in this room. You know, as the people who do hand-on care for the patient and not the people solely work behind the desk, and these people in this room are the ones that should make the decision. If patient care based on the textbook only, then we don't... we practice in a perfect world, there's no decision to be made. And then the business is running only by manager behind the desk without any... without making change based on input from the worker, and the business would most likely be failed. be failed. Messengering on the reason for the pandemic emergency need to be precise, we're understanding that we will be flexible based on the current situation, which is very dynamic with COVID. At this time, two years after the start pandemic, we are no longer in pandemic emergency due to COVID-19, but we need to stay in the pandemic emergency status for continued funding of several very important operation for the care of our people, including testing, immunization, you know, FEMA operating fusion center, and the hospital staff augmentation. G M H and G R M C really need the emergency nurse in order to help care for the patient. But, you know, we will always have D O A, and we have to be very clear on that, not because of COVID-19, but because we have unfinished operation duty that we have to close for the pandemic. We're always going to have D O A, either COVID-related or non-COVID-related, and we're always going to have positive in our community for months to years from now. As we are clearly entering into an endemic phase of COVID-19, we need to set clear guideline on starting the emergency and when we end. The Monday extension of pandemic emergency is not really acceptable because it's an open end clause at this point. My recommendation as a healthcare frontliner, who deal with the patient care on a daily basis since day one, and some knowledge of the testing, immunization, treatment, along with being the former chair of the Physician Advisory Group, is to work for the governor and the public health to really work closely with the legislature in setting up timeline to close this important operation and hold people accountable in meeting this timeline. That's how we move forward on this pandemic emergency, and we know when this end. So again, you know, thank you so much for your time, and thank you, everyone in this room. Wish we work very hard, respect you guys a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wen. Dr. Hattori Uchima.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Margaret Hattori Uchima, Dean of the School of Health at the University of Guam. A good evening speaker, Terlahe, and members of the legislature. I submit this testimony regarding Resolution Number 291-36. As a registered nurse and dean of the School of Health, I would like to address a few impacts that would result from the passage of this resolution. One of the healthcare workforce training programs at the university includes a nursing assistant training program. Upon successful completion, graduates are eligible to take a written exam and a hands-on skills examination, which they must pass in order to receive their certification. CNAs are part of the backbone of the healthcare system, especially in the acute care settings such as G M H and G R M C. During the early part of the pandemic, all nursing assistant training programs were halted. G C C and Guam Marianas Training Center also provide N A training. Due to the extreme shortage and the pandemic needs of the hospitals and home care agencies, U O G and G C C both held innovative temporary nursing assistant training programs with modifications due to the COVID-19 restrictions on face-to-face instruction. At the time, G M H A, G R M C, and H S P had a total of 55 C N A vacancies, and this was in October of 2020. This extreme shortage led some employers to utilize travel CNAs at an astronomical cost, but it was necessary. So U O G proposed a temporary nursing assistant program held in November 2020, and it was extremely successful, with graduates hired directly during the training program. We have subsequently continued our training with 27 graduates receiving emergency temporary work permits, an additional 15 who just graduated last week and will be pending G B N E approval for their ET W Ps. Among those, at least 10 are employed at G M H with five at G R M C, and this includes graduates from a D O L apprenticeship cohort held with G M H and G R M C. Upon termination of the state of emergency, these individuals would lose their permits and thus their ability to work as a C N A. Some may be terminated from their current positions as that certification is an employment requirement in acute care settings. I would like to point out that in November 2020, vaccination had not yet been put in place. We were in the middle of a surge, and the hospitals were overwhelmed and critically understaffed. U O G recruited students from the general public, asking people to come forward and take our temporary nursing assistant course specifically to work with COVID-19 patients. We were completely upfront that the intent was specifically to train CNAs for COVID-19 response. 100 people applied, and the outpouring of support from our island community was amazing and unexpected. This support elevated the spirits of hospital nurses who saw a glimmer of hope because others would step up to help. We had people who lost jobs in the tourism industry apply, complete the course, and continue to work for our people. The job of a nursing assistant is not easy. It is physically and mentally draining. The fact that these individuals gave themselves to help our nurses and our patients for low-paying jobs was and is a testament to our island culture, our island spirit of resilience, and the care we have for each other. Graduates of this program say that this changed their lives. RNs say that this help came at a critical time, and I must speak up to support these people who came forward, jumped into a difficult training situation, and are still working to serve our healthcare organizations today. If we lose these CNAs, the impact on the RNs and the patients will be grave and is not necessary. I acknowledge that senators may not have been made aware of this concern when the resolution was written, and I ask that you take this into serious consideration. These hard-working, dedicated men and women cannot lose their jobs at this point. We also have some B S N students who have emergency temporary work permits as LPNs working now who would also lose that license and ability to work. Their service is invaluable and also helps them prepare for their future career as an RN. The Guam Board of Nurse Examiners, run by D P H S S, has been working to catch up with all the graduates needing testing. However, as we are all aware, D P H S S has been consumed with COVID-19 response. We continue to work with the G B N E and schedule graduates each time a testing opportunity arises, but we still have 30 needing testing in order to obtain their certification. I cannot speak for G B N E, but also know that RNs are needed to conduct the skills exams, and with the shortage of RNs island-wide and the pandemic workload, it's difficult to find enough RNs and hold frequent testing sessions. I know that G B N E is working on this problem, but this will take time to resolve and catch up. Additionally, the island's COVID-19 community level risk is moderate, and the federal government continues to be in a state of national emergency. In addition to the C N A concern, mobilizing other healthcare workers such as RNs, LPNs, medics, et cetera, is made possible only by the state of emergency. As a government nurse, a public servant, I am well aware of my responsibility during a state of emergency. My fellow RNs, as well as our U O G B S N students, take the state of emergency seriously. For healthcare workers, the word "emergency" means that lives are at stake. Our personal needs are less of a priority during a state of emergency. As a profession, the island's nurses, including LPNs and CNAs, have stepped up to do what we can to save lives, whether it's in the hospitals, in a clinic, public health, behavioral health setting, home care school, or in the field. We answered the call to duty during the state of emergency. As one of the nurse administrators activated to the Nursing Resource Command under Ms. Xenia Pacina, I know the limitations of our current nursing and allied health workforce. I also know the power of the emergency declaration, the power of the primary public health authority. This enabled D P H S S to activate the island's nurses, including our students. This provided organizations such as the U O G School of Health the ability to work under D P H S S authority in many settings with the flexibility that is not afforded during non-emergent conditions. And while this resolution states that nothing in this act prevents the governor from signing another emergency declaration if the need arises in the future, I believe the ending of the state of emergency is premature. Our healthcare system continues to be fragile. Our nurses are overworked, tired, and in need of support. Our people continue to arrive dead on arrival at alarming rates, and our non-communicable diseases continue to be a crisis. Do not know the business world or the tourism industry, but I do recognize the economic hardships imposed by the pandemic. I've seen firsthand the suffering of our islanders living in poverty and the increasing numbers of homeless and those on the verge of homelessness. I do not have expertise in economics and business, but I know the pain and suffering this pandemic has caused, as do you all, our honorable senators. You've seen for yourself the many problems our people face, and I do not mean to diminish those hardships by my opposition to this resolution. I do speak from my experience as a healthcare worker and nurse educator. Our students continue to help as they can, continue to work with emergency temporary work permits. While G B N E and our employers like G M H and G R M C must work on solutions to the large numbers of those with emergency temporary work permits, the solution is not readily available. We had a critical shortage before the pandemic, so this situation requires planning to manage and transition as the pandemic nears what may be a bearable outcome. At this time, we cannot afford for those people to lose jobs, and if that happens, our people will suffer. We also continue to need the flexibility to mobilize the health resources that only a state of emergency allows. While we have all done our part to help, without the state of emergency, nurses and other healthcare workers are not obligated to be as flexible as they have been, to set aside their personal priorities, to put our nursing work before our own families. And as a nurse administrator, it would be not, it would not be possible for me to have mobilized the U O G School of Health resources at the level needed by D P H S S. Our nursing faculty, staff, and students take our role as public servants to heart. We love our island and would continue to do what we can to help, but in reality, a state of emergency sets a different mindset, an urgent tone. I truly believe that the state of emergency is necessary to maintain this level of flexibility and mobilization. Please reconsider your resolution, taking into account our fragile healthcare system, our tired but dedicated workforce. We are trying our best to find solutions but need more time to get there. Our island needs to get to a lower level of COVID-19 community risk, which we will achieve in time, but the time is not today, not now. Thank you for your commitment to our island and your consideration of my testimony.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hattori Uchima. Ms. Jennifer Cruz, S V P and Chief Nursing Officer, G R M C.
Hafiday and good evening, senators. Thank you for the opportunity to testify against the proposed Resolution 291-36. My name is Jennifer Cruz, and I am the Chief Nursing Officer at the Guam Regional Medical City. On March 24, 2020, Executive Order 2020-06 created the Cure, a COVID-19 Unified Response Effort Action Team. As such, G R M C was directed and designated by the Governor of Guam as the non-COVID-19 alternate hospital treatment facility because G M H, the designated COVID-19 facility, did not have sufficient capacity to support the island's needs. However, due to the significant number of positive cases seen during the Delta variant surge, G R M C has and continues to admit all patients, including COVID-19 patients. In fact, over the last several days, G R M C has had the highest number of COVID-19 admissions of all hospitals on Guam. The COVID-19 disease, because of its transmission potential, high transmission potential and virulence, plays an additional burden on healthcare facilities in terms of staffing, equipment, and supply cost. And in addition, the decrease in demand and avoidance for non-COVID services significantly reduced normal revenue generation. As an example, 60% of G R M C's full-time RN staff are travel nurses, which increased nursing staff cost by 50%. Further, each travel nurse contract is for 13 weeks with a guarantee of 48 to 60 hours a week, and that's at $175 an hour. A sudden and abrupt declaration ending the public health emergency could be catastrophic to G R M C's ability to recover costs and to adequately staff our hospital. The public health emergency has allowed for emergency temporary licensure for non-licensed RNs and CNAs. G R M C currently is utilizing four emergency RNs and 13 emergency CNAs. Again, a sudden and abrupt declaration ending the public health emergency would significantly impact G R M C's ability to provide care to its patients. Lastly, as was experienced by both G M H and G R M C during the Delta variant surge, we anticipate a high volume of non-COVID admissions as the current Omicron surge ends, as the delay in diagnoses and treatments contribute to progression of disease and worsening outcomes. A sudden and abrupt declaration ending the public health emergency would impact the healthcare system's ability to accommodate the anticipated non-COVID surge. I testify against the proposed Resolution 291-36, and would recommend that the legislature work with the governor on an orderly transition to a non-public health emergency state. It took a significant amount of time and effort to get the cure response machine up and running. We should plan for an orderly and deliberate slowing down and turning off of the machine. Sijus Massey.
Sijus Massey. Again, I'd like to thank each member of the panel and, and all of the hospitals and organizations that you work with for all of your service during the pandemic, to all of the people of Guam, and thank you also for your testimony tonight. I'd like to humbly ask if you could remain for questions from the senators afterward. I know you're very busy, but I am humbly asking that so we can do the full investigation that's necessary. Sijus Massey. All right, we're going to begin the next panel. We'll begin with Ruth Gerissami.
Good evening, senators. My name is Ruth Gerissami. I'm a registered nurse, a business owner from Health Services of the Pacific. We are a healthcare business, primarily supporting patients in their home setting. We provide care to over 4,000-plus patients in the home care setting. Today, I submit before you my testimony for Resolution Number 291-36. I am not in support of this resolution, and I want the record to know why it's not in this document. I'm a taxpayer, and you put all the Gov Guam employees first, and then I'm the fourth panel. A taxpayer should be the first person on here. So for the mere fact.
I'm sorry, that's not correct. There were non-government employees on the first panel, eight people.
So I tried to get on, I got here, and I wasn't on. So yeah, I'm annoyed.
There are 27 people that were signed up to testify, so we're, yes.
Okay. But I was told. Okay, but I was told by your group that the government employees are to go first. So that was what I was told.
That's not correct.
Okay.
That's not correct.
But the reason why I am testifying against this bill are three stories that I'm going to tell the group. So we'll start with the first story. March 15, 2019, President Trump declared an emergency, as you all indicated on the resolution. Health Services of the Pacific was like, okay, what do we do? We cannot get PPE. How do we do this with our staff? And like manna from heaven, $70,000 dropped into our account. That's because the president released $40 billion to healthcare providers that did cost reports. So the hospitals got it, and we got it, and so did some other agencies on Guam. And that was like God sent. However, one week later, Department of Health and Human Services under HERSA provided us the guidance on how we are to spend that money. Not only did they give us the guidance, they told us, you need to upload every quarter documentation and proof of all the money you spent, and it has to show that it's going towards COVID. Today, we continue to do that, and we have to continue to do that till every dollar is spent, and it has to show that it's going to COVID. So I'm going to say that $70,000 was a great pick-me-up. We needed it. We have dedicated all the funds towards PPE, and to date, none of our staff contracted COVID while they provided patient care. Our staff did get COVID, but it was outside of the workplace. My opinion on... When I looked at the resolution, I think that this government spending, that the government of Guam got a lot of money from the feds, I think that that is money that's related strictly to what's written. So on the first one, it was to deal with COVID-related stuff, and then now it's the ARPIS to bring the economy back and build it back up. I don't agree with what the governor and the plans are, but I believe it needs to stay there with the governor, whether we like the decisions she makes or not. I don't want that money to go back. This resolution will make that money go back. I want these senators, if you want my vote, to think about that, because that is the welfare of this community. My second story, not by default, everyone in this room knows that we got asked by the governor to do the quarantine when she declared an emergency. Not the first ones were asked. The Physicians Advisory Group providers were asked. No one stepped up. The governor called me, and she's like, I need your help. I have looked for the providers, and no one helped. I said, Governor, I don't know what to do. She's like, okay, Ruth, you will figure it out. We did. We went to the CDC site, we followed the guidelines, and she said one thing, I don't know how I'm going to pay you. But we did it, because she declared an emergency, and part of an emergency plan is the government then manages all healthcare. That includes us. We followed the CDC guidelines. We tried to interface with public health. It took a week, and we pretty much had to threaten public health to step up and help us, and they finally did. FEMA, when we got on board, we realized with the guidance from our attorney, we really needed to have a scope of work. One of the things on the resolution was this procurement, whereas procurement stuff, okay? And we tried to work with public health, and they kept saying, you have to go to the AG, okay, give us something to write our scope of work. Nothing came out. So we wrote the scope of work based on the CDC guidelines, gave it to FEMA, because that was our instructions. FEMA approved it, and we started invoicing for the work we did. Eighteen months later, the money starts to trickle in. So we're getting it paid. What they did was they came and actually looked at the work we did, they looked at the documents we did, to make sure it all checks, there's a check and balance. During this time, and we were doing surveillance from March 2019 to July 31, 2021. One of the things, and I'm sharing this, and it's going to sound very negative, but I'm sharing it because I want to share the story of the procurement, how cumbersome procurement is even during an emergency. And that's what I'd like to see this body work on. But public health had no medical director. And so what they did during the process when we were in there, they put our physician's name on all the COVID tests without our knowledge, and it was by accident that we discovered it. So when we asked them, we don't have this in our scope of work, it's not part of what we do. They did not agree or even say they did it. So we went to the lab, public health lab, and we asked for all the labs. Three reams of paper was given to us with our doctor's name. That put his license in jeopardy. So we made him come in on Saturdays, and oh, boy, was he pissed. But he had to review every one of those surveillance, every lab result, and he actually called some of the travelers, because it's his name on that document. We brought this attention to public health several times, directly to the administrator, because FEMA said, yes, this is an error, and yes, you should get paid. We calculated to exactly what Medicare would pay, which is the lowest, it's even lower than private insurance. FEMA said, public health has to sign off on your invoice and will pay you. Till date, we have not got a signature. So we filed a government claims. So my thought on this story is, this is an emergency, and we still don't have procurement initiated and in process. I urge the senators, if you really want to look at this, look at that and fix that problem. If we have another emergency tomorrow, I will tell you right now, I don't think the government of Guam can do it. It was the private sector that stepped up without the support from the government. Of course, it's going to make the government mad for me to say this, but I'm going to tell you, kudos to the healthcare system on the private side, and businesses that stepped up and gave us PPE. GovGuam didn't do it. It was Matson that came in, and lots of other businesses came up to us and gave us PPE, because our staff was reusing PPE. And that's something I urge you all to look at before you lift some kind of an emergency like this. My last story I'm going to tell you happened three weeks ago, Saturday. I'm thinking it's a great weekend, I'm going to have a great weekend. I get a phone call from our medical director. St. Dominic's had 15 patients that tested positive, asked if we could help. Just so you know, I've never physically met Fernando, and when he came out of the testimony, he saw me sitting there, and he introduced himself to me. But I picked up the phone and called Fernando, because that was my instructions. Fernando coordinated for the monoclonal. GMH mixed it. That was Saturday. Sunday, I rallied 10 of my nurses. We were at St. Dominic's from 1:00 to 6:00. We gave the IV monoclonal, monitored them, and none of those patients went in the hospital. We have no idea how we're going to get paid for that, and we are going to chase for that money. That should be all under the emergency declaration. But it's not going to come if you lift it. So today, CDC approved the fourth dose, the fourth dose for people who are 50 with immunocompromised or have multiple chronic illnesses. Today, I admitted a patient into home care. Her husband died from COVID in February. She has COVID. The family wants her home. Lift the emergency declaration and then decide, how are we going to take care of her? What are we going to do? So I say this resolution needs more thought into it. The senators need to work with the governor and the government agencies on a transition out. Everybody's been saying it. We need to have a plan, all of us, as a non-nurse, as a person in this community. I would like to see that I walk around and able to give a hug to somebody and not be all garbed up. But there needs to be a plan, there needs to be a strategy, and everyone in this room, be it on this side of the table or on that side of the table, needs to come up with a plan and not make an abrupt decision like this, because it seriously is impacting the health and the welfare of every citizen in this community. So as a result, I don't support this resolution in the way it is written. I urge the senators to seriously work with the governor, if you can. It clearly looks like a... All this Republican senator is signing it, and I don't see any Democrat senator, so I'm starting to think, is it this or this? I just need everyone to know, I am not Republican or Democrat. I have voted for people that I think are doing their job. Some of you in this room I voted for, and some of you I don't know you. But I'm concerned about this bill, about this resolution. So I urge you to seriously reconsider this and think about what can you do to redesign it with the transition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your service to the community, even without assurance of being paid, I'm very much grateful to that. Is there Casey Clark?
Hello? Hafaday, my name is Casey Clark, and I'm a senior in high school. And I'm here today as I am frustrated and confused as to why the government keeps extending the state of emergency. As we have recently surpassed a two-year mark of 15 days to slow the spread, we are long since past any actual emergency. The citizens of Guam now know how this virus operates and spreads. A state of emergency is meant specifically for unforeseen measures of threats, so to suggest that we are currently in an emergency is indefensible. What's so special about Guam that it continues to have a statewide mask mandate and not anywhere else in the US? Does the government hate its citizens so badly that it insists on extending the state of emergency while nowhere else in the US continues to trample on our fundamental right to breathe? Guam now has the dubious distinction of being one of the only places in the US that continues to strip away its citizens' human rights under the guise of a state of emergency. We are not subject to an imperial court, we are citizens. The very root of that word and its Greek origins means co-ruler. Not only that, but as Americans, where our country was founded upon preserving essential liberties, to continue the state of emergency would only serve to lower the image of the government in the eyes of the people. In these trying times, when our civil liberties are trampled, I look to a quote by a patriot and a founding father, Benjamin Franklin. He said, "Those who give up essential liberty for the promise of safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." I read that and think how times have changed. Also, as I was listening to a previous speaker who talked about the 1%, I just have a question. What about the youth? What do you think about the children that can't even see each other's facial expressions or properly speak when they can't even see their teacher pronounce words? What do you think about the plexiglasses that are interfering with their ability to properly view the teacher and slides for the class? Most of my friends at school are sick and tired of these masks and plexiglasses, and for a people group with a 99.998% survival rate, I think is totally useless and unnecessary. So please think about what these measures are doing to the other 99% instead of putting the overemphasis on the 1%. Also, listening to all the testimonies from the DPHSS and the GMHA, I'm curious as to what makes Guam medical establishment correct when their peers in the mainland very clearly disagree. Is Omicron more deadly and more contagious on Guam than elsewhere? This notion defies logic. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Ed Quilain?
Thank you. So I'm thinking that we've been going through this for two years.
I'm so sorry. Please state your full name for the record, if you don't mind.
I apologize. My name is Don Edquillain. So we've been at this for two years now, and the only plan is relying on the executive order and the policies designed by the governor, the office of the governor. So it's my understanding that this resolution, if it's supported, would allow for all you senators to add your brain power as a team partnering and designing a more effective, efficient policy for us to recover and, I'm not sure, start endemic. So we're moving on to some sense of normality. You've got so many people who are going out of business. People need options, need opportunity so that they can stay active. It affects their psychology, adults and children in school. They need to be able to help themselves. They can't completely continue to rely on federal government funding forever. That's going to run out, it's going to dry up their limits. So I've heard concerns that we're going to run out of resources, SNAP, childbirth nurses. I've also heard that it's possible that that can be addressed with this resolution. So all these concerns, the resources lost, I think you senators can address that, determine if it's true, or if they can, is there a way to find funding sources to continue to have these resources for our people in Guam? So I'm with Dr. I won't be able to pronounce his name right, Hua Nguyen. I'm with him. He thinks that we should support this resolution, to my understanding. And I believe that you senators are there for a reason, you're very intelligent, and I think you're going to add your brain power, and it's going to be more intelligent solutions in partnership with the governor. And it's a win-win, because you'll be taking a lot of the weight or responsibility off of the governor's shoulders and sharing that weight with all of the 36th legislature. So as has been said, this is an election year. The people will weigh in and what they believe the policies should be, whether they feel the resolution should be supported. And I think a lot of people will want new results, new solutions, new options, and Right now, we're concerned about mutated coronavirus. coronavirus strains. But to my understanding, these are not lethal. These are mostly mild symptoms. So people with health issues, underlying conditions, of course, are still going to be at risk. But if you don't let people help themselves, inadvertently, there are moral hazards, unintended consequences, you're going to be helping to create these underlying conditions for people who can't help themselves, who can't find ways to stay healthy. Thank you for your time, senators. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Equilani. Mr. Nace, please state your full name for the record.
My name is Kevin Allen Nace. Okay. I am here speaking for the resolution to 9136. Dear Speaker Chulahi, thank you for this opportunity. Governor Leon Guro declared a public health emergency on March 14, 2020. We are now on the cusp, cusp of, uh, of two years of dealing with executive ordered restrictions, mandates that have, that have caused the people of Guam undue prolonged mental, physical, and emotional and financial hardships. The Guam Freedom Coalition has spent a good, sorry about that. Okay. The, the Guam Freedom Coalition has spent a good part of the time seeking transparency from the members of the Guam Legislature regarding a rational and scientific justification for the specific mandates that have been imposed as well as for prolonging the crisis. The goalpost, the goalposts and finish lines have been repeatedly and arbitrarily moved without and often in, in contradiction to the clear scientific evidence and instead apparently in response with the, sorry, in response to political and financial rationales. To this end, we have repeatedly sought audience with the senators who have consistently supported who have consistently supported continuing a state of emergency that entails discrimination and segregation of a group of your constituents based on solely a personal medical status. We are yet to hear back about a public town hall with the panelists that present via Zoom on Thursdays despite repeated request to Guam DPHSS. What the evidence has clearly shown is that the measures that have been taken to date were vastly disproportionate to the actual threat and have taken a toll arguably more devastating than the virus itself. Healthy children were never at risk and instead we launched a campaign to scare and shame them. The mandates have robbed our children of their childhood. They were shut out of their schools, out of activities that gave them a sense of routine and security. They were scared to thinking that they would hurt their nanas and tatas just by hugging them. The efforts of these unscientific mandates have taken a devastating toll on our children's mental health. The number of children in counseling continues to rise with a critical shortage of counselors to help, to help them. There has been an increase in suicidal ideation and heartbreakingly. Many have succumb, have, sorry about that. Uh, many have succumbed to it despite a strong body of evidence that make, that masks, especially cloth ones, provide a negligible benefit. We and our children have been forced to wear them, studies showing significant drops in speech and language development. IQ and cognitive development in children born just before the pandemic have begun to trickle in a, and paint a grim picture. Parents and children, parents and children have been pressured to vaccinate younger and younger, even though there is virtually no risk to young, to young ones from the virus. And significant risk from the inadequate test, uh, of the inadequately tested vaccines with no available long-term data. The potential and proven benefits of alternative therapies, natural immunity, and generally healthy living have gone unmentioned. As a monolithic narrative of vaccine as the only solution has been chanted from every sector of government and media as evidenced by the FSMB memo. Those who are unvaccinated for a wide variety of reasons have been demonized by the government, by the governor and local medical professionals took a social media, took, took to social media to create the narrative of the pandemic of the unvaccinated. This is even as ERs and hospitals have been populated increasingly by vaccinated breakthrough cases. The, the unvaccinated have been barred from engaging in society while those who jumped through the government's hoops and got their vaccines and boosters were welcome to freely mingle despite early and strong evidence that showed they too catch spread, get sick, and die from COVID at, at similar rates as the unvaccinated. Arbitrarily, uh, quarantine provides, periods have been imposed and repeatedly changed, all without any clear evidence of their effectiveness. Vaccinated people with infections are, are given more freedoms than healthy, virus-free, unvaccinated people. Anyone that can, I'm sorry, anyone that can will see this is no longer a health emergency and has now become a vicious cycle of doom. Emergency equals federal funds. Extended emergency, more federal funds. The people of Guam have suffered while the government of Guam, while the government of Guam and the pharmaceutical companies have greatly benefited from prolonging the status quo. If there is a more noble reason for the continued extension, it has not been evidenced yet. We are heading into a legislative session on 2/18/22. Guamanians are asking our senators to please come together and terminate the emergency for all the reasons stated and substantiated by, by the accompanying legislature. We are asking you as our voice and vote to prioritize and take action to end the COVID-19 emergency declaration before this session ends. With waning vaccine efficiency, efficiency, and several new therapeutics in the market, many states in the U.S. and several countries around the world already have or are getting ready to drop mandates and lift restrictions. So must Guam. Our people are ready to get back to living life to the fullest and you must use your ability as elected leaders to deliver on our request to end emergencies. Lift all mandates for all of Guam's residents and let us go on with our life. We are here to support you, your, your efforts and you are here to work on behalf of your constituents. It's time to move forward on the path to recovery, on the path to normalcy and brighter future for the beautiful island. Uh, let's see. We have called, uh, for, we have called for a public town hall several times. Sorry. The lack of transparency has been appalling. One way, sorry, I can't read this anymore. I, I can't understand the writing. I'll skip that part. Okay. Okay. As Ms.
Just, just take your time.
As Ms. Gurusami testified earlier, uh, okay, it says here, the government, okay, yeah, as Ms. Gurus, as Ms. Gurusami testified earlier, the government does not, uh, does not know how to manage healthcare. Okay. Uh, so we need to get the government out of healthcare, uh, out of the healthcare of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nace. Mr. Thomas Cruz?
Can I take my mask off?
Um, no, sorry.
Okay. My name is Thomas Cruz, as you mentioned, and I'm here to testify to lift this emergency mandate of mask. Okay? And I'll speak on my vernacular, which is tomorrow. Okay. Malafansata fangom prendi, neshtanla itana suwa esti maski fasuta. Mampus esti pa itautausti, ipamagun, maminanas, man mahano pa iskela, man sata manahagun. Itautauniman mapodgi se ipamalawan, ipat gunnia gisanalum, tinahung manglu, tinahung. Yasi gasita usa, hajzi na mediku kenahu dung, sina sumangan na maolik esti maski pa itauta. Ombobusad itauta, tinafanahagun maolik, esti maski anafan malalangu itauta. Dale, te sina kumprendi esti, pu fa boan, atanfana. Itauta ne man gaigigizung, damasi ya man malogu, ma usai maski, man finababu pa. Itauta lukini, edzusia ini i, hagas man malangu, man uusai maski talu, ni na mas malangu sa tinahung manglu gitautaunya. Pu fa boan, anzuni i, islatura gini, na parafan, antisi na ona para sa ngoni gebenu sa na para, dahle, atana itauta huzung itanuta. Megaina man mamata igigima, sa timan malagu, man hano paspetan. Sa anman hano lungi, man afanyaga galu, damasa ngoni ipamalenia, te sina mabisita. Pes edzo, na, na tauto, igai gispetan, asanganana tiholum sa talu, anmuzung, edzigi. Ofta manu patatu ngu esti, i, sistema pa gu. De binata atanlai, sa baba esti i, sige mabosad itauta. Dongkulu sina ira ipetauta. Pu fa boan, anzubaba kuru sunmizu, fangago wasii, zanatan. Maolik esti manglu, anun hagung, fresku na iri, gaigirambi gi Guamlai, gaigigi ni gitanota. This is Guam. Basta man ma ekungu kenahu dung sia i, tauto ni, masa ngonin, apa patatsogi gini gitanota. Basta, hasu na bula, tauto ginozung, man ma'nyau sta, anpa fanhano pa tenda, man binobusad. Dahle, gasu te sina kumprendi, aman hano pa restaurant, mamoka dolu, mimi maski, pes manazan, man matatsung, mapula i maski, pes pu fa mboka, ti tom tu mabisina viruslai. Sa ngoni hajzi na mediku kenahu dung sina mo, sumangan na estigi asodra sina virus. An sina asangan edzo, pes no i, itauta gi tanu, damatungu, manu gaigina asodra. Ha, deta atanlai. Pu fa boanlai, hasu mbii manaina, hasu ipamagun, hasu si lukina i, idilu, kambi, mungama feksas idilu gi kilizono itauta. Uhugung esti unsutera, dosi onius, madulu, ipaguma dulu, heart attack, makuni paspetan. Pes ni manazan, manazan ma, ma treat, edzi dosi onius, manahuzung, manano pa gema'ne, sapagu, gaigigi, wheelchair, redan karita na gaigigi, hasu mbiloai. Anhajima lagu madulu, po'lu, dosio madulu. Okay. No na para, misti maski, talu, si belinya, gebenu, ekungu esti, ulii, hobu mabaila sin maski, gaigigi, gi telefon, zaulio talan male trachutu, anibaka domo, sin maski talu. Aida gaigisata domo gini, libanu, tino puna'osau, dosa ngonio, na para fana, yes. Thank you for letting me speak.
Sidosmasi, Mr. Cruz. I would like to thank all of the panel for their testimony tonight and for being patient with us as we went through everybody. Sidosmasi. Panel is excused. The legislature's audio is going to reset, so please stay tuned. We're going to have questions in a minute.